... your love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to an alumni of our very own Grand Prairie Voice Choir for the audio. We'll move on to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Can I get a motion for that set of minutes, please? Councillor Minhaus.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the council adopt the minutes of the city council meeting held on Monday, November sixteen, twenty twenty as presented.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Minhaus. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are there any errors or omissions that we need to address before we adopt them? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Council members in chambers, please vote. Thank you. Councillor Blackburn, how do you vote? I believe that was in favor.
Sorry, yes, in favor.
Thanks, Councillor Blackburn. That motion carries unanimously, and I'd look for a motion for the adoption of the agenda, please. Councillor O'Toole.
Yeah, I move, thank you, Mayor Given. I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on the agenda as recommended? Seeing none, then I will call for council members in chambers to vote, please. And Councillor Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. That motion carries unanimously as well, and this brings us to the open delegation portion of our agenda. This is one of two opportunities that we have at every regular city council meeting for any members of the public to present to council on any community-related matter. We did have one delegation let us know in advance today that they wished to present. That was Mr. Morgan Sird. Mr. Sird, I believe you're there. If you'd like to turn on your camera, we'll give you about five minutes to make your presentation. There'll be an opportunity for council members to ask any questions they might have of you. And then after the conclusion of your presentation in time, we'd ask you to turn off your camera. That's the same as stepping away from the presenter's table in city council chambers. But welcome, Mr. Sird. We're happy to have you at council today.
Thank you for having me. I'm here to talk about the new changes to the business bylaw, business licensing bylaw. I went around and talked to a bunch of business owners over the last week. And overwhelmingly, there are more that are against changing the current status of the business licensing bylaw than are in favor. And on that note, there are more tradespeople that wish this business licensing bylaw would go away than would actually like to keep it. More and more people do not want their information going to a third party, such as the Chamber of Commerce. If they wished them to have that information, they would have joined. That's all I really have to say.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Sird. Don't go away just yet. We do have an opportunity for council members to ask any questions if they wish. Counsel, any questions for our delegation? Seeing none? Oh, Councillor Freezone?
Thank you, Mr. Sird. So this is specifically to the privacy of it, the information going to a third party? Is that the main sticking point with these folks?
Before I get too far, your audio is off.
The main sticking point from the majority of them is having to pay in the middle of a pandemic to join forcibly and having their data and information passed on to a third party.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Mr. Sird, I was just wondering if you could explain the types of people that you were talking to. You said business owners. But can you enhance that information by telling us the type of businesses that they represent?
It was actually a really broad spectrum of businesses, from oilfield to small mall and pawn stores. I took the time over the last week to go around and actually talk to these people, ask to talk to the owners, managers, and so forth. And overwhelmingly, I came up with there are more, a heck of a lot more people against this than are for it, and they think, a lot of them think you should deregulate the trades underneath this business bylaw.
Thank you.
Councillor Bressi.
Great, thanks, Mr. Sird, for presenting. I'm just kind of curious in terms of you talked about trades a couple of times and talked about deregulating it. The recommendation coming before council would actually see a tradesperson go from having to, or sorry, somebody with a construction or a mechanical trade or those types of licenses having to go from paying a hundred and five dollars a year to zero dollars a year? I'm wondering if the people you're chatting with were aware that that was a recommendation, and if so, what their thoughts on that were?
A lot of their thoughts on that point get to that sticking point of they don't want their business data to be given out. They're okay with not paying. They just don't want anything, any of their data released.
If I may, and I'm also kind of confused. My understanding is the city has pretty rigorous requirements it needs to follow under provincial privacy legislation in terms of what it can and cannot disclose, and it can't give, my understanding, and I'll be asking this, I'll clarify this to the administration when we get to discuss in the bylaw and council has a chance to ask our administration questions, but my understanding is that we don't get to hand over just specific information about companies to third parties. So what information were they concerned would be handed over? Can you just share a little bit more about that concern?
Well, most of the concern I got was if they wanted any information given to the Chamber of Commerce, they would have joined. Honestly, it's, a lot of people do not want any of their information passed on or given out or shared. It doesn't matter if it's the biggest or the littlest. A lot of individuals do not want any of their business information passed on to anybody.
No, I agree. That is a concern, and my understanding is that that wouldn't be happening, but I look forward to getting a chance to ask our administration when we're debating this bylaw. So thanks for raising that, because that is indeed, if that's going to happen, that would indeed be a serious concern.
Thanks, Councillor Bressi. I don't see any other questions. Mr. Sird, thank you very much for your presentation this afternoon. You're welcome to stick around and listen to the rest of the council meeting on Zoom, but we just asked that you turn your camera and your microphone off. As I said before, that's sort of how you leave the presenter's table in this virtual format, but you're welcome to stick around and observe for the rest of the meeting. I'll just ask if there was anybody else on the line that had intended to present to city council this afternoon. I think as I look across the list, it looks like pretty much all administration that are there. And so I don't believe that there are any other members of the public. I would just remind everybody that even though we are virtual, the opportunity to present to city council does still exist, and administration can assist you in making those arrangements if you wish to. And I believe we have a scheduled delegation at our six P M. session this evening as well. So we'll close our delegation section of our agenda and move on. We have a number of items under reports today, and the first is item six point one, the City of Grand Prairie twenty twenty one budget. This is a result of our city council budget discussions a couple of weeks ago. I would look for a motion to get that onto the table. Councillor Minhaus.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the city council approve the budget twenty twenty one to twenty twenty four operating budget and twenty twenty one to twenty twenty five capital budget as presented.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Minhaus. So this was the subject of a couple of days of discussion. I see that we're joined by Ms. Whiteway. Danielle, did you want to give us any overview of the operating and capital budgets?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. So just a few notes and just to go over kind of what happened during deliberations. Council committee of the whole deliberated on the operating and capital budget, November twelfth and thirteenth. The budget presented by administration over those two days reflected many hours of collaboration, analysis, and work by staff to deliver an operating budget within council's directed target, as well as a capital budget that maximized grant funding and ensured city infrastructure will continue to support citizens and services in the future. So administration proposed the budget at one and a half percent for twenty twenty one. Council approved two strategies and made new investments while reducing the proposed tax rate change to only zero point one five percent. This comes with increased pressure for the city from decreased provincial funding, impacts of investments and services, inflation and more. Twenty twenty saw a tax rate increase of one point two five percent, which council, considering the current economic climate and as a result of COVID nineteen, provided tax relief to citizens by way of a one-time reduction equal to that one point two five percent. A reminder, the mill rate bylaw outlining the rate required to achieve council's tax target will come forward likely in April of twenty twenty one, with tax notices slated to be released in late May. This is the last budget to be passed for this council's term. You've invested in the community with new facilities and millions in road rehabilitation, mitigated provincial pressures, seen total inflation over seven percent, and fared through a global pandemic. With today's final approval of the budget, tax rates will have decreased from what they were at the beginning of the term. So as stated in the report for council, administration recommends that council approve the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty four operating budget and the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty five capital budget as presented. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Ms. Whiteway. That motion and with that introduction is open for discussion and debate. We'll look for any discussion or debate, and if there was none, then I would move to voting. I see Councillor Clayton and then Councillor Bressi. Councillor Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Given. A question for administration in regards to the implications of the Revolution Place renovation. Currently, it includes the foyer as well as the loading dock. I just want to be clear that the concession, food and beverage upgrades are part of the different bucket, as noted, or where do they fit in that?
Sure. So I see Director Miller has come on screen for me on Zoom, and so Director Miller, are you volunteering to take that question?
Yes, I will. Thanks, Mayor Given. So it is two different pots of money, if you want to call it that. So our intent was to, still, we have the remaining, it's about a four hundred thousand dollar fund remaining, so that would be used for the concessions. And then the motion from budget deliberations was the second funding source of three million dollars.
So as noted, the concession upgrades that were initially part of the four hundred thousand dollar approved amount are now singled out as a seventy five thousand dollar upgrade. Additional items such as office space, the rest of the capital acquisition of chairs is sixty thousand dollars. So all that's left in that three million is the ticket office upgrades for efficiencies, which is sort of the vestibule and concourse area, as well as the loading dock area, correct?
Through the mayor, so that three million was the entrance area, the lobby as well, and then I believe that also included the box, or sorry, that was deleted. It was the loading dock. And I'd have to defer to Catherine if there was anything else included in that, but.
Sure, maybe we'll go to Ms. Ridgeway to speak to the scope of the three million dollar renovation that was approved at budget time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that included the vestibule or box office upgrade, the side of the building and the loading dock, with all of that three million.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just, thanks, Mayor Given. Ms. Ridgeway or Director Miller, can you tell me how recently the quote of this work has been priced out? I know it was a while ago, and I understand, you know, prices change continually, and so how recently has that three million dollar price tag been updated?
Ms. Ridgeway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The estimate and drawings were done in June of this year. So it has been a fair bit of time.
And at that time, it was an estimate. There was, it was basically, how realistic is this budget? Is it a back-of-the-napkin price? Or is it, you know, we talked to three friendly contractors that we work with on a regular basis, and how comfortable and confident are we in this price tag?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We dealt mainly with our local providers. We talked with Design Works and Turcon. It also included some input from our C F M. department, and they feel that it is a good budget.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Today, I can't, you know, I'm going to think a little bit here, and I'll let my colleagues go ahead, but as during budget deliberations, I simply can't support the two point seven approximately for the foyer and ticket office area. This council has approved a business case to look at another facility, potentially, maybe that's in the next ten years. But to enhance a facility that we may not even be using in ten years, to me, simply feels like we're throwing money away. So I absolutely support the upgrade at the loading dock, the concessions, everything else that's listed there. One thing that's not listed here that we can talk about later is the number one issue we hear about this building is sound, and it's not listed here. I really believe that the foyer vestibule area is a nice-to-have, and it's not the time for nice-to-haves right now in our economy. So I'll let my other colleagues chime in, and I'll come back to it. Thanks.
Thanks, Councillor Clayton. Councillor Bressi.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Given. I'm actually going to try a motion, because I think that this is something that council should at least reconsider. There's things in the budget that I disagree with. I lost votes, as did all of us, and most of them I can live with, but I think that what Council Clayton was talking about is a very significant decision that council should reconsider. And maybe it still wants it, maybe it doesn't, but I think that it's one that we should just approve today without discussion. So I'm going to move that council transfer two point seven million dollars from Revolution Place Utility and Accessibility Renovation Project to the twenty twenty two budget as funded by General Debencher. And so that's two point seven five million dollars. That would still leave two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this budget line, which would be enough, and this emotion I worked on with administration. That would be enough to still do the loading dock, which I think is a need-to-have for the facility. But it would be saying, hey, this year, we're not going to borrow money to upgrade the vestibule and lobby. Instead, those are going to go to budget deliberations next year for the next council to decide. And for me, I really get why that front-of-house renovation would be very good for the facility. I really get how it would enhance customer experience, how it better allow for two events to help in the building, how it would increase security of that building. I really get why it's good. But this is also a year where we're facing lots of unknowns. We had our Minister of Municipal Affairs write us saying, hey, make sure you're only having need-to-haves with capital projects, because your infrastructure funding is probably lower than you actually think it is, which is paraphrasing, but I think that's the message I got from the letter she sent. This is a year where we're going to be talking affordable housing projects throughout this year, and we don't know where funding is coming from. And if this council is going to decide we want to borrow some money or not to get some affordable housing in the ground and do something that is a very top-of-mind council strategic priority, I just don't think it's the year to be borrowing money for something that's not need-to-have, absolute need-to-have infrastructure. And for that reason, I hope that council will accept this motion, and if it does, then I've got a follow-up motion that I'll be making to make sure that the loading dock is funded out of reserves instead of borrowing, because it's just not the year to borrow for something like this. So I hope council will support this motion, and I'll just read it one more time. It's the council transfer two point seven million dollars from Revolution Place Utility Accessibility Renovation Project to the twenty twenty two budget as funded by General Debencher.
Thanks, Councillor Bressi. So we can have discussion or debate on that proposed amendment. I see Councillor Palat is in the queue. Councillor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Just can I get a recollection or administration to just kind of walk me through that? Maybe I'm not remembering properly, but I thought it was capital tax. It was an implication on Debencher, but just clarify that it is Debencher for twenty twenty one, and if we did slide it, it would be just Debencher for twenty twenty two.
Ms. Whiteway?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yeah, so for the Revolution Place three million, we had funded it via Debencher, which was estimated in the operating budget as well for twenty twenty one.
Okay, so in essence, I guess if this were to approve, it would affect the operating budget slightly for the potential tax increase for next year?
Through the mayor. So if you were not to proceed with the borrowing for three million dollars, then it would decrease the operating tax requirement from zero point one five percent to zero percent.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Whiteway. Any other discussion or debate on the proposed amendment? I will just say that I will vote against the proposed amendment for a couple of different reasons. First, because I think this is the year to be putting people to work. Council had a significant discussion at budget about how much money we're spending on roads and on one class of infrastructure, and that only touches a certain part of our economy, certain types of trades. My understanding of these types of projects is that they would be significantly different type of trades that are not being engaged. There is not, to my knowledge, a lot of the same amount of private work as there used to be, and I think that these are great ways to put people to work. And so on that basis alone, I think this is exactly the kind of economic stimulus that the provincial and federal governments have been funneling money down to municipal governments to do. I don't think they funnel that money to us to keep it in reserve. And so, you know, is this a nice-to-have? I think Councillor Bressi did a really good job of highlighting all the potential operational benefits that administration shared with us during budget, and that's the second reason that I support these enhancements. No matter what the next council does, I think it's likely that this facility will exist for at least ten years. I'll still put my money on that it'll be ten years plus, but, you know, that remains to be seen. I'd like it to be functional for ten years. I'd like it to be safe, the staff that work there alone sometimes for the next ten years. I'd like it to be functional for the patrons who attend a hockey game and the patrons who attend a gala at the same time. And so for those reasons, the ability to put more money into the local economy to ensure that people that put up steel and people that put in doors and windows and people that lay cinder block, whatever that's called, masons, that there is some work in twenty twenty one for them. We have an ability to do that through this project, and I believe it offers lasting benefits in terms of the functionality of the facility that likely will be there for the foreseeable future. For all those reasons, I won't support the motion. I see Councillor Blackburn, and then we'll come back to Councillor Palat. Councillor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given, and thank you for the comments that you made regarding this. I agree with you all the way. And I would just like to point out further that we had very full discussions about our capital budget when we were in those deliberations. And we had access to a lot of information, and I just don't feel comfortable making changes now without having the same amount of access to information that I could readily pull up. I think our budget is a good one, and I would like to stick to it the way it was proposed in committee of the whole. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Councillor Blackburn. We'll move next to Councillor Palat and then Councillor Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'm going to support the motion. I think that it makes sense, and I probably would have said this at budget. I'm not happy about it being Debencher, but I think there's better ways of going to take on debts to leverage that kind of money to really get an impact for our community. For three million dollars, that's all, it's nice for the facility, but it's not going to get leveraged a whole bunch outside of that facility, and I think there's some things that, you know, through economic development, we've had some conversations about how we could much more leverage the money than that. I also think through some of the conversations just since council I've had with people, I'm hearing some pretty creative solutions of how this building could be retrofitted and potentially not needing some of these things being done at all. And I'm really excited about hearing some of the options of how we could retrofit this building, and I would be worried that a year from now, I don't think it hurts us to do this in a year if we set it aside. Some of those conversations are interesting, and they will become more topical, and hopefully they're through engagement and community conversations. We're going to hear more about them. But I do think that there's a potential there that some of these would be a hundred percent throwaway, and that's would be my fear if we do this next year while we're doing the consultation. I think they could be throwaways. And so for that, I actually think we should support this, and if we don't, through the engagement process that we're undertaking, if it doesn't come out that we're going to do a rental next year, then we'll still go ahead with this in twenty twenty two. We're still going to be looking for work for years. Recovery is not going to be in one year with this, I think, from COVID. We're going to see years of recovery time for construction industry, so I don't mind leaving some of that and safeguarding future construction in other years. So I think it's a good amendment. I appreciate it being brought up.
Okay, thanks, Councillor Palat. Councillor Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I will support the motion, although I don't support the intent of it. I'm only going to support it because I don't think there's enough, I have enough support to kill this entirely. If I'm fortunate enough to be elected next year, I will fight it at that budget, because I do, as Councillor Palat just said, feel that there will be throwaway costs here. There are a couple of things in consideration for next year. Not only by creating projects do we create jobs, another way we can create jobs is through tax cuts. And so putting business, putting money back in business owners' pockets is as important as creating projects to create jobs. So in turn, if we know that next year looks like a tax increase, we're going to put it to zero this year, hopefully with this motion. Next year, we can address a project that potentially could be throwaway cost, and in turn, I look forward to seeing the information of what a project looks like, a better, more purpose-built facility down the road. And in turn, then this may lend this facility being retrofit or become a community rink, which would be nice not to have to build another hockey rink in the next ten years either. So I will support the motion, not because I want it to happen next year, but because I want it to pass today and not be an impact on this year's budget. Thanks.
Thanks, Councillor Clayton. I don't see anybody else in the queue. I don't see anybody else in queue, so we'll go to Councillor Bressi to close.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yeah, just to address a couple of things I heard is I really, I appreciate others bringing up the study we're doing on what a new build might look like. And we're looking at, we're spending two hundred thousand dollars looking at potentially replacing this facility. It just, that's another big unknown. It just doesn't make sense to me to spend three million dollars on a facility we don't know if we want in the medium term. And that's a good one, but I also really want to address what Mayor Given said in terms of this is the type of economic stimulus that stimulates industries that don't fall into road building, which is where a lot of government money is going, and I really agree with that. I appreciate Mayor Given highlighting that. I would point out, we've got a four million dollar low-cost recreation center that does stimulate a lot of those industries, but also I'd say that, yeah, I would like to see more money going into construction that's not roads. But I think there's opportunities to do that that more align with council's strategic plan, such as affordable housing. And I'd be quite, I'd be very interested in getting pretty aggressive at getting some projects going and getting them going in the next construction season. So for me, it's not that I'm against necessarily spending money to stimulate different parts of our economy. It's that if we're going to do that, we should be doing that with something that's better aligned with our strategic plan, and I just don't think this is. I really think getting roofs over the top of people's head is a better place to be borrowing money if we're going to be borrowing money right now. So I hope the council will support this motion.
Thanks for that close, Councillor Bressi. So we will call for council members in chambers to vote. Council members, please vote on Councillor Bressi's proposed amendment. Councillor Blackburn, how do you vote?
Opposed.
Thank you. Still waiting for a couple in council. Thank you. And that motion carries with six in favor and three opposed, so that motion does carry. Councillor Bressi, you said you had a follow-on amendment?
Yeah, thank you. So if I'm understanding, if I'm understanding right, that would still leave two hundred and fifty thousand dollars under our budget for loading dock renovations that right now is funded through General Debenchers. And I talked to administration, my understanding, and by all means, ask administration if you'd like, but my understanding is that there's some room in the future expenditures reserve that could fund that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and also it probably doesn't make sense to borrow for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so my next motion is going to be council-approved funding the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Revolution Place loading dock renovation project. dock renovation project through the future expenditure reserve in 2021.
Okay, thanks very much, councillor Pressy. So that motion is essentially changing the funding source for that remaining project from borrowing to utilizing the city savings, the future expenditure reserve. So if everybody's clear on that, open for discussion and debate on the motion. Discussion debate on that motion. Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Council members in chambers, please vote. Councillor Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. So the budget has been amended on those two points. Are there any other items that council members wanted to discuss before we move on to voting on the 2021-24 operating budget and 2021 to 25 capital budgets? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote on those budgets as amended. Please vote. Council members in chambers. And councillor Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. And that motion carries unanimously. Our next item of business related closely to the budget, of course, is bylaw C-1395D, the fees, rates, and charges bylaw. I'd look for a motion for first reading before we get into any introduction from administration. Can I get a motion for first reading, councillor Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1395D, being an amendment to the fees, rates, and charges bylaw.
Thanks very much, councillor Thieson. We'll call for the vote on first reading. Please vote. Councillor Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. And that motion carries unanimously. And I guess I'd look to administration if we were planning on presenting a overview of the fees, rates, and charges bylaw, if there are any significant changes, now would be the time. My understanding is that the bylaw is in alignment with decisions made by council at budget time and the recommendations of administration. Were there any other major items that we wanted to highlight before proceeding on second, second reading? Seeing, I see councillor Plott. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I just was hoping maybe just to clarify with administration, I believe that we had discussion at committee that there was kind of not going to be a charge for for businesses for the first year. If I'm understanding that right, I don't see it in the thing. But I'm just wondering if we should be listing it and putting a zero beside it so that it's a line item that people realize there's value. We're choosing to discount it this year, but not just not having it in there at all. I'm just wondering if administration could speak to that, please.
Sure. Councillor Plott, are you talking about the business license bylaw and the charges?
Just went under the fees and charges under the business section of it.
Yeah, we did have, we've got a couple of items going over the last little while with respect to the fees, rates, and charges. And so is there a member of administration that can speak to the relationship of the fees, rates, and charges bylaw to the business license discussion that council had had and the alternatives that council directed through committee to bring forward? Director Bork?
The, and I'll just, I will look to the clerk just to confirm this, but the fees and charges that were presented with budget that we're approving today are separate from the business bylaw. And the difference is, is when they're coming into force effect. The bylaw that we're passing here right now relates to the overall fees and charges was coming to force January 1. The business bylaw has a, and I'd have to look to my colleagues, it's a later spring, May, May coming into force. So they, that's a separate, separate item, not captured in this bylaw.
So is it administrations, just as I'm looking at the bylaw? The bylaws here, we have the recommendation coming for an amendment to the fees, rates, and charges bylaw is later on in our agenda, councillor Plott. I think that's the one that we're talking about that has that sets the amounts for business licenses. And as director Bork identified, that portion doesn't become active. So there are no charges for business licenses in the bylaw that's in front of us right now, because it's our current rates, fees, and charges bylaw that has the old system where not all businesses require a license. The amendment that's being proposed under 7.5.2, infrastructure, economic development later today, is the one that would propose to add that charge for all types of businesses and includes the $0 fee. So we kind of, we have to pass the old bylaw. And then later on today, we're going to amend the old bylaw with amendment that's actually not going to come into place until May. So you're right, they don't show up because they haven't been added until we do it later this afternoon.
Okay, no, thanks for that. Three years in, still learning. Appreciate it. Thank you.
It's, let's just say that not, something like this doesn't come up every term. That's, this is a bit of an unusual situation. Yeah, absolutely. Okay. And so with that discussion, can I have a motion for second reading? Now that we are all clear that we are passing the rates, fees, and charges for this year under the current business licensing system? We'll talk about the new business licensing system later on in the agenda. Can I have a motion for second reading, councillor Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1395D.
Thanks very much, councillor Thieson. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote in council chambers. Council members, please vote. Councillor Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Second reading carries unanimously. Councillor Thieson?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I would move that council have third reading of bylaw C-1395D at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, councillor Thieson. So this is a motion to have third and final reading. It isn't actually third and final reading. This is a motion to move on to third and final reading. For us to do that third and final reading, this motion must pass unanimously. If it doesn't, then that last reading will come back at our subsequent council meeting. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading this afternoon? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote in council chambers. Council members, please vote. And councillor Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. So that motion does pass unanimously, so we can move on to third and final reading, councillor Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'd move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1395D, being an amendment to the fees, rates, and charges bylaw.
Thanks very much, councillor Thieson. One last opportunity if anybody has any discussion or debate on that motion. Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Council members in chambers, please vote. Thank you. And councillor Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. That motion carries unanimously as well. I believe that takes us on to item 6.3, appointments to returning officer and substitute returning officer. I will look to Ms. Karbushusky, our city clerk, for an introduction on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Given. This is a quick report. It's a bit of a housekeeping item in anticipation of our 2021 municipal election. It is a mandatory requirement under the Local Authority Election Act for our council to appoint a substitute returning officer. It's interesting, the Local Authority Election Act, it's, it's only a suggestion to appoint your returning officer, but I felt we might as well just do both in one report. So with that, I'm asking council to make the recommendation as indicated. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Ms. Karbushusky. I'll go to councillor Blackburn for that motion. Councillor Blackburn, we'll make sure that you get on the score sheet, even though you're virtual today. Councillor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council appoint A. Karbushusky, city clerk, as the returning officer, and V. Norris Kirk, deputy city clerk, as the substitute returning officer for the 2021 general election.
Thanks very much, councillor Blackburn. Any discussion or debate on this motion? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote in council chambers. Council members, please vote. Thank you. Councillor Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. Thanks, councillor Blackburn. And next, we go to item 6.4, lease of city land. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that council approve a term of 25 years for the lease of city-owned lands described as Plan 969MC, block 52, lot 28, to Decoy Armory's foundation. And with that speaking, this is normally something that doesn't come to council. And we don't normally do five-year, we usually have a no more than five-year lease. But because the amount of money that's going to be invested in this project, which is this project right here, they requested a 25-year lease.
Okay, thanks very much for that motion, that introduction. Councillor O'Toole, any discussion or debate on that motion? Councillor Thieson? So have you in the queue. Councillor Pressy?
I just, because he won't do it himself, I just think that it's important to say thank you so much to councillor O'Toole for bringing this forward. I know that he's been very active with this committee, and it's going to be a community facility that's going to see some significant reinvestment and public reinvestment, not taxpayer reinvestment, which I think is very exciting. And I just wanted to thank you, councillor O'Toole, for bringing this forward and for all the work you've been doing quietly behind the scenes to get this to a point where it can be brought forward. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, councillor Pressy. Recognition well deserved. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I will call for the vote. Council members in chambers, please vote. Councillor Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. And I think that that handles all of our items under reports, unless there was any additional items. Councillor O'Toole?
Yeah, on behalf of the Decoy Armory's Foundation, I'd like to highlight some of the city employees that really made this smooth. And that would be Gordon Holliday and Brian Glaven. And on behalf of Rotary for being persistent, Randy Bearstow and Bruce Tattery. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much, councillor O'Toole. With that, I think we'll move on to committee business. And item 7.1, council committee, the whole budget deliberations. I think they're still fresh in everybody's minds, aren't etched into our memories. I'd look for a motion to receive those minutes. Councillor Thieson?
There we go. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the council committee, the whole budget deliberation meetings held November 12th to 13th, 2020, as presented.
Thanks very much, councillor Thieson. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote in council chambers. Please vote. Thank you. Councillor Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. And we have a related motion. Councillor Thieson?
I can do it all. Yeah, that would be good. I would move that council approve the transfer of the 2020 municipal operating stimulus transfer funding, and otherwise known as most, to the future expenditures reserve to support the strategies presented.
Thanks very much, councillor Thieson. We did have a discussion about that at the budget deliberations. So I think council is aware of those strategies. Is there any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Council chambers, please vote. Councillor Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. And will take us to 7.2, the Community Services Committee Meeting. Councillor Blackburn, I think that's your set of minutes.
It is. Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council adopt the minutes of the Community Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, November 24, 2020, as presented.
Thanks very much, councillor Blackburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. And councillor Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Councillor Blackburn, anything you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
I'll just highlight a couple of things that came from director Miller's report regarding the community knowledge campus. The permitted booking timeframe in the fitness center and track has increased from 60 to 90 minutes, which is a bit of a benefit for some of our users. Under events and entertainment, the first month results for the real ice system at Dave Bar shows an estimated energy cost saving of approximately $2,800 in October, which is 2.1% savings compared to last year. And this is, this is an improvement where the ice is treated with cold water instead of hot. And therefore, there are energy savings, which is good news. Regarding sports development, administration is developing a toolkit to guide the community in planning neighborhood events. And of course, right now, neighborhood events aren't happening because of guidelines from the, from the province. The brochure will be ready to be launched when we're able to use it, which I appreciate administrations work on. And under transit, I would mention that the annual stuff-a-bus kickoff occurred November 13th and had good response. There are additional stuff-a-bus events taking place. I believe one happened on Saturday, although I hadn't heard how it went. And there are further ones in December, provided that we don't have new restrictions that would prevent that from happening. And that's all I'll report on for now. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Blackburn. We'll move on to the Protective Services, Protective and Social Services Committee meeting. Councillor Plott?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I just make a motion that council receive the committee and Protective and Social Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, November 24, as presented.
Thanks very much, councillor Plott. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Councillor Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Councillor Plott, anything you care to highlight from the minutes?
Yeah, it was actually, we had a pretty good meeting. We had a couple of things from our director manual for updates with the fire department, the 911 system for the Northern Rockies has been configured, and test calls are being made. And it's anticipated this service will be live by the end of 2020. Also a reminder that December is impaired driving month, so 10 check stop initiatives have been planned with a target of 3,000 vehicle contacts. We also had a lot of quarterly updates, which I really appreciate. We had a quarterly update from the RCMP, the Fire Hall bylaw, and also community social development, which had some good data. So for members of the community that are looking for that, it is in our November 24th packages. We can go back on the city at any time and find there's some good information in there. And we had a lot of conversation about food truck permitting, which was, was interesting. So we'll see some, we'll see some new changes coming in for food trucks, and I think a little more certainty for their industry, and probably future conversations coming from that.
Absolutely. Thanks very much, councillor Plott. I think we can move on then to the Corporate Services Committee meeting, and councillor Minhaus.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the council adopt the minute of Cooperative Services Committee meeting held on Tuesday, November 24, 2020, as presented.
Thanks very much, councillor Minhaus. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Councillor Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Councillor Minhaus, anything you want to highlight? Sorry, yeah, absolutely. By all means, sorry. Before we go to highlights in the meeting, let's deal with business arising. Thank you.
Move the 2021 budget improvement area budget review recommendation council review and approve the 2021 budget improvement area BIA budget in council chamber on Monday, March 8, 2021, at 3:00 PM, as presented. Can I do the second one right away? And the, and the direct to the administration to notify business within the BIA of the update, while latter company by the copy of the proposed 2021 BIA budget.
Thanks very much, councillor Minhaus. This is the Business Improvement Area, otherwise known as the Downtown Association. A lot more people will be more familiar. This is formally through the legislation, and this is the annual piece of business that's required under the legislation that establishes the Business Improvement Area. Is there any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Councillor Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Now, councillor Minhaus, sorry, do you want to cover any highlights?
Yes, a couple of things. Why is administration have when meeting with the external auditor as a preparation for the year end? And the human resources, the current paper-based reminder process for the health and safety bill be moving in the light in the platform? Government is six project identified as ICIP and/or MSP funded have been at least to the market. and/or MSP funded have been at least to the market. GIS and IT administration contacting to review of the all current federal security threat response as planned. That's all I have today, thank you.
Thanks very much, Council Minhaus. And then it'll take us seven point five, and Infrastructure and Economic Development with Council Ressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Given, I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Infrastructure and Economic Development Committee meeting held Tuesday, November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty as presented.
Thanks, Council Ressi, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote, please vote. Council Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
That motion carries unanimously, Council Ressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Given, I would move that council approve Site One in Crystal Lake for the location of the Bike Skills Park.
Thanks very much, Council Ressi, um, that motion's open for discussion or debate, or would you like, care to make any introduction on it?
Yeah, so just a little bit about where this comes from is it's part of some COVID economic stimulus funding we've received from the federal government, so this will be eighty percent federal funding. It'll be a Bike Skills Park that will give residents on the northeast side of our community where they're far away from recreation activities, a place for their kids or anybody else who cares too, to go and get out and get active on their bikes, so that's exciting to me, it's, there's two locations that were identified by administration for council. Uh, Site Two had the benefit of being in the trees, which shelters from wind and has some, I think some coolness factor to it, but Site Two is problematic in that because it's in the trees, you can't see it from the road, so there's some crime prevention concerns there, there's some invasive weed seeds we know that are in the soil, so you could spread those around by doing construction there. And also there's some plants that are sacred to our indigenous community and that get harvested, harvested there. And so for those reasons, administration is suggesting that Site One, which is right along the main road, is a better place for it, that'll be more accessible to the community, have less impact on the community.
Thanks very much, Council uh, Ressi, any discussion or debate on that motion, I think I saw Council Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Although I would prefer Site Two, sorry, I'm, I would prefer Site One over Site Two. Uh, I'm not convinced that even Site One is the right place for this bike park. People who were given a choice between the two, of course, uh, would prefer Site One for a variety of reasons, however, it, it's in full view of a lot of residents uh, along the other side of the road and it's uh, between the uh, residents and the uh, the lake. And uh, I would just consider it to be something of an eyesore and uh, so I would be opposed to putting it in Site One and I would hope that administration has other options that they could provide for us in terms of the right place to put this park. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Blackburn. Any other discussion or debate on that motion? I'll just uh, say that I, I do support the recommendation, um, in my limited understanding of Bike Skills Park, I think it's important for us to um, understand exactly what those do and don't look like. My understanding is that these are actually pretty low intensity. I think most of us, when we're thinking about bikes and, and parks, we probably think on the south end in South Bear Creek Park, where there is the, the really built up uh, dirt pile BMX park is what I'll call it. Uh, we actually established a skills park that's in behind the Bike Skills Park, that you might not notice if you walked by it on the trails. It is uh, a collection, uh, you know, I'm sure that there's some earthwork that was done, uh, but it really is a collection of paths and stones and logs that the skill that you're developing is being able to drive up and down them without falling off. Um, so it is a pretty low intensity in terms of the, the impact on the neighborhood. Uh, if we were talking about a BMX park, um, that would be more similar to the, the large one that we see down in South Bear Creek. Uh, I could, I could appreciate the concern, I think that this will be a nice amenity in the neighborhood and will actually be of a appropriate level of uh, intensity of development that, that I think won't be incompatible with the, the rest of the uses in that area, so for all those reasons, I support the recommendation. I don't see anybody else, oh, uh, Council Clayton, then Council O'Toole, and then Council Ressi.
Thanks, Mayor Given, I too, uh, support option one, I think that uh, anytime we can see youth and and activity outside our window or in a land, um, a gathering is, is a great sight to see. People um, really appreciate the facilities at South South Bear Park, but I think now to have something in the northeast quadrant just is a great addition to our city. And so, um, although it's not the traditional pristine land that was there before, in an urban setting, I think it's great to add recreation with a mix of urban and um, and sort of traditional park settings, so I think this will be a good addition to the area, I think it's a, a very it will be a very well-used facility and the youth and the, and the cyclists of the, of our city will be very happy to have another addition, so I absolutely support it. And I'm happy to see uh, that uh, Site One will work well because I think it's a great location for it, thanks.
Thanks, Council Clayton, Council O'Toole?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given, uh, as a grandpa and spent a lot of time at that skills park with my grandchildren this summer. What I was impressed with was some of the older riders actually took their time to show the younger ones, uh, which could be as little as six years old or younger even, to some of the older ones being in their late fifties. So uh, I really think that this is gonna bring the community together up there in the uh, area that's proposed. And uh, I can tell you that I witnessed people that rode their bikes from the northern part of the uh, the city down there and they would go till dark. So uh, this is something that doesn't go from eight till five in the morning. Uh, it goes all day and I, I really think this is gonna be an added uh, asset to that area. Thank you.
Thanks, Council O'Toole. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so we'll go to Council Ressi to close.
Yeah, I, I just wanna say that I, I definitely understand Council Blackburn's concerns. I've, I've got a home that when we bought it, it was across from some green space and all you saw was trees and, and big bushes and now those, most of those big bushes are gone and you can see one of the biggest playgrounds in the city and where there used to be nobody across the street from our house, now it's not unusual on a Saturday in the summer to have literally two hundred people playing within a hundred feet of my house and it definitely changed the enjoyment of our property. And if you ask two members of our household, they'd say it's the best thing ever because there's always a show to watch out the front of the window, out the front window. And if you ask two other members of our household, they say it's the worst thing ever because there's no peace and quiet in our house on a nice summer day. And so I definitely get that there's an impact here, but I don't think it's bad impact for everybody. But I definitely understand that it will have some on others and I also, I'd also just highlight that this is kind of the nature of some of the stimulus funding we received from the federal government in terms of we need a quick turnaround time. There might be better places for this, for example, I'd love to see it on a school, on school land, so a school could really easily access it through phys ed. But that's something that just takes time to talk to a school board, get approval, do all, do all of that and we just don't have that time because it has to be completed by the end of twenty twenty-one, so it is kind of unfortunate in terms of the speed of this funding coming out and the fact that we were given about two weeks to make decisions on it is, there, there might be better opportunities for some of that funding. But they're not available to us because of how quick we have to turn around and I think that this is the best we can do right now and so I'd encourage council to support this.
Thanks very much, Council Ressi. For that close, we'll call for the vote on that motion, uh, please vote. Thank you, uh, Council Blackburn, how do you vote?
Opposed.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that motion carries with eight in favor and one opposed, Council Blackburn opposed. Council Ressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given, I'd actually ask the chair to recognize Council Thiessen, who's agreed to bring this forward on behalf of committee.
Sure, Council Thiessen?
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Given, thank you very much, uh, Chair Ressi. Uh, I would uh, move that council give first reading to Bylaw C dash thirteen ninety-five D. Being an amendment to the fees rates in churches by law.
Sure, thanks, and just for clarity, I think this is thirteen ninety-five C. It's time, we did, we did D earlier on, I know, yeah, this one's got a bit of complication to it, but this is thirteen ninety-five C. And this is the part that does apply to the uh, new categories of business licenses that would be delayed start into the new year. So this is a motion for first reading, uh, no discussion or debate on first reading, I'll call for the vote, please vote. Council Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
That motion carries unanimously, uh, Council Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given, I would move that council give second reading to Bylaw uh, thirteen ninety-five C.
Thanks very much, Council Thiessen, uh, open for discussion or debate on second reading. Council Ressi?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor Given, I would move that council amend, amend the fee for non-resident business license to four hundred and twenty dollars. And just to speak to that, four hundred and twenty dollars is what we charge right now. If this amendment doesn't pass and we pass this by law, we'd be increasing the fee of non-resident businesses by a hundred and fifteen, fifteen dollars per year, which in the long term, might be, might be good policy to charge businesses that don't pay property taxes to the city but do business inside the city of Grand Prairie, it might be, it might be right to increase those fees. I just don't think this is the year for it, I think that when we're facing all the issues of COVID nineteen, I just don't think it's right to, no matter where the business is based, I don't think it's right to raise how much money a business is gonna be paying this year. I'd also point out that if I'm understanding the staff reports from committee properly, all that raising this fee would generate would be about sixty thousand dollars of extra revenue for us and I don't think what this messages to our business community is worth that, I think that if we do this, then the story is council's raising the, raising fees on some businesses. Whereas if we leave this fee alone, then actually we're leaving the, we're leaving the fees flat for non-residents in home occupation businesses and we're eliminating the fees for resident businesses, I think I'd rather go out and tell the community, hey, every business next year is gonna pay the same or less than they're paying right now than saying, yeah, some businesses are paying less, some are paying the same and some are paying more. So I really don't think that this year is the right year to be increasing fees and I really don't think that the sixty thousand dollars is worth what this would message to our business community, so I hope that council will support this amendment.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Ressi, uh, open for discussion and debate. Um, I see Council Thiessen in the queue, Council Thiessen?
Okay, good, I, I actually thought Council Palat beat me to the punch, but it looks like, I looked over, he, he cleared his queue. Uh, so Council Ressi, just a question in regards to this, uh, do you think that uh, by making no change at all that it will uh, encourage non-resident businesses uh, to do more business in Grand Prairie, or if we keep it as proposed, that they will opt out of doing business in the community of Grand Prairie?
Yeah, it's, for, for me, it's hard to say, I think that that, I think that hundred and fifteen dollars, the hundred and fifteen dollars itself isn't huge for a business, we're talking a little bit over ten bucks a month, but I think for what it communicates to businesses, I think it's huge, I think that that's communicating to these businesses and this year we're gonna, we're gonna charge more to you and I think that is messaging that's not business-friendly, messaging that in the midst of a pandemic, isn't good messaging and so I, I sure don't see how it helps us increase in the fees on those businesses.
Hey, uh, just a follow-up question, if I may, uh, for Council Ressi. Uh, in regards to the local businesses, uh, there's no opt to change that at all here right now. Now, uh, if I'm a local business owner and I, I'm competing with somebody out in the county, let's say, you know, I know that I might have this extra hundred and fifteen dollars in my pocket. What are we gonna say to, how are we gonna message that to our local businesses that uh, them paying annual taxes within the city of Grand Prairie, that uh, they're gonna get the same deal as somebody that doesn't pay taxes in the city of Grand Prairie?
Mayor?
Council Ressi, yeah?
Well, I'd, I'd point out two things, first of all, I'd point out that they still, these non-resident businesses still will be paying four hundred and twenty dollars more than a business that, that is in the city, so they will be paying more. But I'd also point out that there's times to think as a city and there's times to think as a region. And I think that when we're in the midst of a global pandemic, we should be thinking as a region, not a city. If you, you, you folks know some of the positions I've taken, usually I'm pretty on board with saying, hey, we need to make sure that we're doing a fair deal for city residents and that they aren't getting a fair deal and we should be, and we should be fighting for that and that's been my agenda a lot of this term, but we're in a pandemic, my thinking has changed for this moment in time, so let's think as a region, not think as a city right now.
Thanks, uh, Council Thiessen, um, Council Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given, I'm, sorry, I was trying to find the information and I can't, so I'll just ask a question for administration. Non-resident um, includes anybody not living in the city, correct?
Which member of administration would care to take that question? I mean, I, I think by definition it is anybody that doesn't live in the city, but Ms, Ms Dennis, would you like to care, care to respond to the definition of non-resident?
Thank you, Mayor Given, um, yes, that is correct, so the non-resident applies to anybody that um, resides out of the city limit.
And so I guess my concern, um, I like your statement, Council Ressi, that you said uh, in, it'd be nice to be able to say that they stayed the same or went down, I really appreciate the intent there. But my concern is to protect businesses of the city of Grand Prairie. And I don't think that um, by increasing non-residents that we're really fighting a good fight to protect the residents of the city of Grand Prairie. If it meant that more um, people came in and rented a temporary commercial space that maybe sold soup from Red Deer, if it deterred them because it was up a hundred bucks, I'm kind of okay that the Grand Prairie person selling soup has an opportunity to get ahead. Um, I think that non-residents, that increase is so minimal. If I recall correctly from discussion, it was comparable to other mid-sized cities. End of the day, I want to protect the economy of the city of Grand Prairie. If this was impacting the region, great, but people outside the region, that they're not them coming to do business in our city when we have empty commercial spaces and empty spots, you know, whether it's a building owner that's looking to find a tenant or the Prairie Mall, who is one of our largest taxpayer, taxpayers looking to find a tenant, if it's buildings on our west end, if it's an opportunity for the farmer's market to get more people. End of the day, I want to protect the people in Grand Prairie, so by increasing this a small amount, I um, I truly believe we'll do that. Although not a lot, it will do it a little bit, so I can't support your motion, thanks.
Thanks, Council Clayton. Yeah, Council Clayton, I was just gonna also chime in with uh, the information that was presented at committee about uh, our comparator municipalities. Lethbridge, uh, and the information that was reported us, Lethbridge is at seven hundred and seventy-four dollars for a non-resident business license, Medicine Hat is at seven hundred and seventy-two, St. Albert at six hundred and eighty-three, Fort McMurray, uh, which is regional, is five twenty-five. Red Deer is at four twenty and Airdery is the lowest in the province at three fifty, so the uh, recommendation of five hundred and twenty-five dollars puts us pretty squarely in the middle of the pack and, and certainly on the lower end of those, not near the, not on the top end. And so, uh, you know, recognizing that this council has put a focus on property taxes and has really said, you know, uh, where there's a user fee to be charged, we're okay with charging user fees. Um, I support that uh, direction that we've done as a council this term. Um, it is relatively small in terms of the total of sixty thousand dollars to the city's bottom line. But I believe it is an opportunity to look at some additional revenue. And it is largely in line with our peers across the province and for those reasons, I support the um, recommendation as originally brought forward. Council Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Given, just a question for administration on this, that we, we went through different scenarios and and I know I was a big believer and I'm, I'm happy that administration's got that a, a local resident business wouldn't be paying any fees on this, but I'm just curious if, if this were to pass, does this in essence mean we have a sixty thousand dollar shortfall uh, for next year's operating site? Or would we have to look at readjusting some of the other fees if we're looking at this being, I believe the modeling was kind of done on a break-even sort of basis?
I'll go to Director Glavine?
Thank you, Mayor Given, uh, that's correct, if we adjusted the fees downwards from five twenty-five to four twenty, that would reduce it by, I believe approximately sixty thousand dollars and uh, would create that corresponding shortfall.
Okay, so, so for that, I, I appreciate the ten, that Council Ressi is trying to do here, I, I never want to see fees go up for any business, but at the same time, I really was more excited about us not charging local businesses at all. And one of the things we discussed was having a twenty-five dollar fee that we said, hey, maybe we shouldn't do that. And so I would much rather have zero fees for the local people and have a hundred dollar go up for everybody else for us to balance this so that we're not negative on this. I know it's not a big impact in a two hundred and fifteen million dollar organization, but sixty thousand dollars chip away here and there, so um, I won't be able to support it and I'm, I'm happy with it, we're gonna keep the zero for the local businesses and I'd like to see us support that more.
Thanks, Council Palat. Uh, I don't see anybody else in the queue, uh, on Council Ressi's amendment, Council Ressi, I'll let you close on the amendment?
Yeah. Thank you, I, I just really wanna encourage council to think about the impact that raising this actually has on resident businesses. I think that in the best of times, people don't pay attention to the nuts and bolts of what's going on in council chambers and they pay even less attention right now. And I don't think that there's gonna be many local businesses, resident businesses that hear, hey, non-resident business fees went up and that means they support me over the non-residents and that's a good thing, council's supporting my business. I think instead, the message is gonna, that's gonna go around the community is, hey, council, raise the, raise the fees on some businesses. And for many business owners who are nervous- for many business owners who are nervous, exhausted, information overloaded, there that's going to lower the that's going to dampen the message of council just changed its resident business fee to $0. I want that message to be crystal clear and crystal strong, that council really understands what businesses are going for going through, and therefore we are charging $0 to businesses where we used to charge 105 to a number of our resident businesses. And I think that I just really want to be able to go out and tell people, hey, we didn't raise the fees on anybody. All we did today was lower fees. And I hope the council will support this amendment so that that's not the message. Or sorry, so that that's the message. So let's think as a region, not a city. And let's think about how do we make it crystal clear to our resident businesses that we really don't want to be downloading fees to them.
Thanks for that. Close, Council Pressy. So we'll call for the vote on Council Pressy's proposed amendment. Please vote on Council Pressy's proposed amendment to reduce the non-resident business fee from the 525 that was contained in the recommendation down to $420. Please vote on that amendment. Council Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Okay. That motion does not carry with three votes in favor, including Council Blackburn, and six votes opposed. So we're back on to second reading as originally presented. Counselor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I just a question for administration now from earlier. I'm just wondering, as we're not charging for residents businesses, I'm just wondering if there was any thought on this of putting a zero on this with an asterisk due to COVID or first year of implementation or something. Just at some point, there will be value on this. I think for me, I really don't think this was the year to have it. But I almost, I guess I go back to my 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 life is business where if you do do something with a customer and say, hey, I'm just going to throw this in this time, but the paperwork's there, they actually realize that there was a they could have been charged. I think at some point, we're going to have to charge for the service. But I don't know if I like it not being on the records anywhere right now. So I'm just wondering if administration can speak to that, or if I need to make an amendment to specifically add that we add that in with a $0 fee with a asterisk saying first time, first year was free, just so we get I appreciate what Council Pressy is saying. It's not like people sit here and watch our council clips over and over and hear all this deliberation. But I think if somebody was looking that up, it would at least show a zero with an asterisk that at some point, they're going to maybe have to pay.
Director Blavin?
Thank you, Mayor Given. As committee directed or referred scenario four, which was purely a $0 for resident businesses without any fees associated with it whatsoever in the future years, we would need an amendment for that to come into effect on our end.
Okay, thanks. So Council Pla, if you were wishing to make an amendment, something like that, it could be along the lines of amend by law C-1395C to reflect a resident business license fee of blank dollars. And that that fee be waived for 2021. I think that that would signal council's intent that there is a minimum fee that that, you know, that that charge for that. And clearly, that council is not intending to budget for or charge that in 2021. But I think if you're looking to make a motion, I think that that's what it would look like. And you can fill in the blank with whatever number you think is the appropriate sort of baseline for that general business license.
So just on that, and I will, I will be happy to make that motion. I had asked that committee if we have a kind of a scope of what it costs to to actually administer a transaction, that would be part of the, for me, what the number would look like. If $25 is not even a break even, then maybe we don't do it. But I'm just wondering if administration has any idea of what a number would be, what it actually costs us to bill and reconcile payment.
Director Bark?
Thank you, Mayor Given. As as stated during committee, the $25 included more than just the processing of an invoice. That included initial setup here of of this process, which is going to take a little bit more time in in working with business owners. As we do not have an ERP, we haven't looked or we have, there is many different processes for many different invoices. But we have taken a look at one of our most common ones. And it is about $6.62 we've estimated for labor and another $1.13 in postage and stationary for sort of a typical invoice that would have some manual input into it.
Okay, so on that, I will make a motion that we add a line for business license fees, for resident business license fees for $25 with, I guess, an asterisk beside it saying that it wasn't charged for 2021 due to COVID.
And yeah, and that council waived the fee for
Counsel, yeah, thanks for that clarification, Mayor Given. The council waived it. And I guess with that, this would be an annual discussion every year with fees and charges. So future council, next council that sits here can decide if they want to start charging this fee, or if they're going to continue to waive it. But at least I'd like to just see it being in our paperwork that there should be a fee for that at some point.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Pla. I'll just check with the city clerk that that motion is clear. Ms. Karwshuski? Yes, okay. Okay, any discussion or debate on the amendment proposed by Counselor Palat? I see Counselor Pressy in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yeah, I can't support this support this amendment. I don't think that we should be charging a fee for resident businesses to operate in the city of Grand Prairie. And I don't and for me, it's not just a COVID thing, although it's especially problematic this year. But I don't think we should in future years either. I think that for a resident business, they're paying huge non-residential property taxes. When they're paying, when they're paying large taxes, it doesn't make sense to me to give them an additional tax. I get the idea of of giving a fee to a home occupation that's not paying non-res taxes. Even though I was against raising it, I get the I get the idea of non-resident fee. But it doesn't make sense to me just to add an additional tax on to a resident business that's already paying that property tax. So that's one reason I can't support this. I think the other reason I can't support this is the point of this bylaw, at least my understanding, isn't about generating revenue. It's about generate generating general industry data. So how many businesses do we have operating? Is that going up and down? What industries do they represent? And it's also about getting contact information so that next time we face a disaster in our town, we've got a better way to get a hold of business owners and push out information they might need and ask how we can help. And I think if you anytime you charge a fee, somebody's less likely to participate in a program and just skate try their best to skate along under the radar. And so for me, I can't support this because I never want to see our resident business line seen as a revenue line.
Thanks, Council Pressy. Before we go to Council Pla to close, I'll ask if there's anybody else that wishes to get into discussion or debate on the proposed amendment for Counselor Palat. Seeing none, I'll go to Counselor Pla to close on his amendment.
Mayor Given, I'm just wondering what protocol looks like with with Council Pressy saying that. Can I amend my own amendment? And I guess having the wording be zero, my original intent with this, and I just kind of rushed a little bit, there was, I just wanted to have something documented so that people realized there was a fee or zero fee or whatever in time. So if we're saying $25 due to COVID, we're not charging, and then next year, we're going to debate it, there's a really good chance next year, it's going to be not approved. And we're going to go back to zero, depending depending on there's a good chance. For me, I just wanted to show that it's something that's on the books, and I guess. So I'm wondering if I'm allowed to amend my own amendment to just have it say zero and not due to COVID, just so that it has a dollar amount on there. Even if it says zero, at least it's showing that residents fees are that there's a line item for. I guess there's a for me, I'd be worried about confusion of why aren't they paying? I think at least it would say there's a number. Whether it was $25 and council chose to waive it for this year, or there just says zero. And I'm fine with either one of those. I just would like to make sure that that resident businesses realize they're not being charged or they're getting a credit for the year. But there's there is a name and a line item for there because right now, there's if there's not in there, I don't know what what happens to a business. I appreciated just zero. But then we're phoning them to collect that, and we're phoning them to collect things. And I agree with Council Pressy, my intent with this is that I think this overall has a lot of value to the city. I'm not sure as much of the business community. But I also think that's a way for our group to say, hey, it's a free permit. So I'm a little torn off. Am I amend my own amendment on that to say zero and not have a due to COVID, just so that it reflects that there's a line item on our on our paperwork?
Sure. So maybe just like to administration. So I mean, if having it at zero, my understanding was that that's what it was originally. I think that there is a line just and I was just searching to see if I could find the bylaw. I'm sorry, that my council package document is pretty long and scrolling back, trying to keep up with the agenda. So it does the bylaw currently just as proposed initially, does the bylaw describe the a $0 fee for resident businesses, I guess, is my question? And is there somebody from administration that could answer that? So let's just let's just satisfy first what was originally proposed, and then we can discuss Counselor Pla's amendment. My understanding was that originally proposed was a line item that showed a resident business fee of $0. Is there somebody from administration that can confirm that for me? Ms. Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So originally, the proposed fee scenario that we did on committee there had the resident fee at $25. And then when we did the motion to remove that and change it to scenario four, it was decided that administration would remove that zero resident line in there because it didn't make sense for it to be in the fees and rates and charges by law as a zero fee. So it was decided to remove that out.
Okay, so so Counselor Pla, yes, it's true. If council doesn't make a motion, then it shows that there is no as originally proposed, it would show there would be no line item for for a charge per se for resident businesses. I think your motion to include an amount on that line, and that council is expressive expressly approving waiving the collection of that fee in 2021, gets as close as you can to the to what you're wishing to do. If you wanted to drop that due to COVID-19 off the end of your motion, then it detaches it from that. And basically says that this is the cost, which will be built into the bylaw, and that this council is choosing not to collect that fee.
You know what, I'm going to apologize to my council colleagues here today. But I'm just if I can, I'm just going to withdraw my motion altogether. I think my my intent was I wanted to see it show up there. But it's really not doing anything by showing up there. And I think next year, we'd be having this conversation all over again, whether we want to charge $25 or not. And so I think we should just leave it as it is. And my apologies for wasting our time with that.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Council Pla. So Counselor Pla withdraws his proposed amendment. I see Counsel Clayton in the queue. Counsel Clayton, did you wish to speak to that amendment that's been withdrawn? If if he did, then there's no need to speak to it anymore because it's gone. Yeah, if you wish to propose amendment?
So thank you, Counsel Pla. I missed the the button to get in soon enough. I would like to keep that amendment. As stated, however, with the without the mention of COVID, I think that it's really important for people to see the value being zero that this council shows that we the importance of doing business in our community and having a zero price tag shows that we are thankful that you're doing business in our community. And although it may change, it's zero. So people look for it, they look through the information, they can see it. Oh, I'm a resident business owner, I pay nothing. So I'd like to amend the motion to reflect a zero cost within the bylaw. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counsel Clayton. That motion's obviously in order now that somebody wants to make it. No, that's fine. So that motion's in order. Open for discussion debate on that motion. I was I will just say that I was smiling to myself. Administration may want to consider the relevance of resident and non-resident business fees and how they may or may not stand up with regard to provincial and national trade agreements. Sort of an interesting question that I'd never actually considered before just this moment. So I'll just throw that out there for council and administration to maybe consider at some point in the future. Having said that, I agree with the principle that's here. There is a cost of processing, at least a minimum cost of processing these business license fees. I think we need to acknowledge that there is that cost, and that council is choosing specifically to provide this support for local resident businesses, particularly in these economic times. Subsequent councils will have the opportunity to look at this on an annual basis and choose to decide whether they wish to continue that ongoing that support on an ongoing basis. So I support that proposed amendment. Counselor O'Toole?
Yeah, I would support this. And I'm looking forward to maybe businesses that aren't necessarily registered right now might buy into the program. We do collect information. But on a situation where we want to know what kind of businesses we have in town, we can can work with them on a provincial level as well when it comes to finding support. So I'm in total agreement with this. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. I don't see anybody else in the queue. I'll just check to make sure. Counsel Blackburn, I don't think I saw your hand. So we'll go onto the vote on Counsel Clayton's amendment. Please vote. Thank you, Counsel Blackburn. How do you vote?
Opposed.
Okay, thank you. So I have one opposed, Counsel Blackburn, and eight in favor. That motion does carry. Is there any other discussion or debate on second reading of the bylaw as amended? So we're on second reading of the bylaw as amended now. See Counsel Pressy.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Given. A question for administration that's relevant to this, but might lead me to move in an amendment later on another agenda item. But for the purpose of home occupation, it's not home occupation isn't currently defined in the bylaw. So what types of businesses working out of a home would have to would have to pay this $200 fee? And who working out of their home wouldn't have to pay this $200 fee?
Would that be for Ms. Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So at this time, any business that's a separate business entity that works out of their home would be classified as a home occupation. So whether that's a home-based business that has massage that's operating out of their home location there, or if it's just a home office where it's just bookkeeping and all they do is strictly, you know, emails and and office computer work. So that applies to to minor or major businesses.
Thank you. And is that is that just the practice of administration currently? Or is that defined somewhere in the bylaw that's coming before us? Dennis?
So that, thank you, Mayor Given. So that is part of, I guess, the land use bylaw where they have the home office consent as well as the home-based business permit. And then in our current bylaw, the home occupation is description is a business carried on by an occupant of a resident.
If I'm understanding right, though, that's the definition that's in the current business licensing bylaw. But is that definition in the new business licensing bylaw that council will be considering in a little bit?
Thank you, Mayor Given. That is correct. So it's in the current business license bylaw. That definition has not been included in the new proposed bylaw.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Is there any other business or motions arising before we go on to the motion to have third reading? Counsel Thiessen? I think we got through second there after a couple of amendments.
Looks for me. I would move that council have third reading of bylaw C-1395C.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. Yeah, I'm just checking with the city clerk about whether we voted on the second reading as amended. We voted on the amendment. The amendment carried eight to one. We didn't vote on the second reading as amended.
Yeah, I didn't think we did. But I was willing to bow to your grace.
Yeah, no, thank you. So we'll go to second reading as amended with apologies, council. So we're on to second reading as amended. Any discussion or debate on the bylaw now with that amendment incorporated? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Counsel Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Now we can move on to motion to have third and final reading. Counsel Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council have third reading of bylaw C-1395C at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. As with the previous instance this evening, this is a motion to move on to third and final reading. Is there any discussion or debate on the merits of moving on to third and final reading this evening? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. You and Counsel Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. So we can move on to third and final reading. Counsel Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'd move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1395C, being an amendment to the fees, rates, and charges by law.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Excuse me, Counsel Blackburn. My apologies. I clicked the close vote and display results before I asked you for your vote. I can cancel and we can do that again. Counsel Blackburn?
Not necessary. I'm voting in favor anyway.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Blackburn. That motion carries unanimously. My apologies. Quick fingers, a little bit faster than I need to be that one. So if we can move on then to 7.5.3, Counselor Pressy?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that counsel give first reading to bylaw C thirteen thirty-two B being an amendment to the Grand Prairie Cemetery's bylaw.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counsel Bressi. Of course, no discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Counsel Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Counsel Bressi?
Thank you. I'd move that counsel give second reading to bylaw C thirteen thirty-two B and, um, sorry, just our genders are getting funny. But yeah, I would move the counsel give second reading to this, to this bylaw. And just to speak to this, this is a bylaw amendment that came through our regular bylaw and policy review process. It's mostly just housekeeping amendments to better align with current city operational policies and with some, and with provincial legislation. Uh, the most significant change is just clarifying some of the rules around disinterments, which are obviously a very not good process that sometimes has to happen. And so making sure that the city policy and bylaw around is very clear about the rules when that can happen, when that can't happen, and clarifying the city has the right to refuse if requirements of the appropriate provincial act are not met. So mostly just housekeeping, but I think some very important housekeeping things are happening in it.
Thanks, Counsel Bressi. Um, any discussion or debate on that second reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Counsel Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Thank you. And that motion for second reading carries. Counsel Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that counsel have third reading of bylaw C thirteen thirty-two B at this meeting.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counsel Bressi. Motion again to have to move on to third and final reading. Any discussion or debate on the merits of moving on to third and final reading this evening? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Counsel Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Counsel Bressi, we can have a third and final reading.
Thank you. Well, in that case, I would move the counsel give third reading to bylaw C thirteen thirty-two B being an amendment to the Grand Prairie Cemetery's bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counsel Bressi. Any discussion or debate on that third and final reading? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Counsel Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. That motion carries. And Counsel Bressi, was there anything that you cared to highlight from that set of minutes?
There is, but before I do, I got one more motion I'm going to make, and that is that counsel approve revisions to policy six oh eight being the memorial bench and tree policy. And just to speak to this, again, very housekeeping amendments such as changing department names in the policy to align with current operational practice.
Great. Thanks very much, Counsel Bressi. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Just looking for a couple more in chambers here. Thank you. And Counsel Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Counsel Bressi?
And then the one other element of committee business I'll highlight is we had a report presented on Ninety-Two Street and it def, it's a rural cross-section that's getting busy, but is a ways away from being twinned according to our transportation master plan. However, our engineers did provide a report on some improvements that will be made in 2021 with the intersections at seventeen, Seventy-second Avenue and Eightieth Avenue. So there's going to be some separation between lanes added, some turning lanes added. I think it's going to be a lot, oh, and some lights at those actual intersections added. Not traffic lights, but street lights to provide illumination style lights. I think it's going to make, make the commute in and out and through that area a lot better for residents. So I'm excited to see that happen in our capital program next year.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counsel Bressi, for that update. Um, I think that handles all of our committee business and takes us on to one item out of reports of unfinished business. Um, is that darn business license bylaw back again for three times on the same council meeting? Uh, but this is the business license bylaw C thirteen ninety-five before any amendments. So it's almost like we're going back in time here, digging through layers of sediment to get to the original business license bylaw. Can I get a motion for that third reading, Counsel O'Toole?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, give, I move that counsel give third reading to bylaw C dash thirteen ninety-three being the business license bylaw as presented.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that third reading? Seeing none, and I would just note that Counsel Blackburn has stepped away, and so he won't be voting on this motion. I will call for the vote here in council chambers. Please vote. Sorry. Sorry, I will cancel that. Um, Counsel Bressi?
Mayor Given, I thought I pressed my button and I, and I obviously didn't. Um, I do want to move an amendment to, I do want to move an amendment to this. And, or where this is coming from is, uh, we're charging a $200 fee for home occupation, but that's not defined in the bylaw that we're considering today. And I, I think it should be in. Talking to administration today, I asked what kind of businesses would have to charge a home occupation fee, which, which type wouldn't? And how our current administration is planning to interpret this, really, really reasonable. I'm comfortable with that. But my concern is if our current administration wins the lottery and no longer works for the city, I want to make sure that it's still going to be interpreted in a way that's reasonable to me. And specifically a question that I had was, oh, what about somebody who works in the oil field and they spend all their time working on a well site south, south of town, but their, their employer has chosen to structure them as an independent contractor, so they get mailed to their house once or twice a year to file their taxes? Should they pay a $200 fee? I don't think they should. And our current administration, my understanding is they don't think they should either. But technically, without anything defined in the bylaw, you could interpret it that they should pay $200. And so I'm going to move, um, that counsel add a definition for home occupation into the bylaw. This is a definition, if you want to see it, I did email it to counsel and I emailed it to our clerk as well. And just so you know, it's a definition that I didn't write. It's one I asked administration, hey, if I wanted to move to have a definition added, what would you recommend? And this is what they gave me. So I would move that counsel amend the bylaw by adding a definition for home occupation, reading means a business that is located in a residential dwelling or combination of a residential dwelling in an accessory building in a residential neighborhood to conduct a business activity by at least one permanent resident of the dwelling. This includes home businesses and home offices as defined in the city's land use bylaw. This does not include business entities where the entirety of the operations of the business occur off-site.
Okay. Thanks, Counsel Bressi. So I would note for the public that Counsel Bressi did forward that to the rest of council ahead of time. Uh, so council members have had a chance to see that in writing. Um, uh, just in case anybody was wondering if we're all voting on that, uh, that really fulsome definition just off the top of our heads. Uh, council members have had a chance to see that and consider it ahead of time. And thanks for that, Counsel Bressi, that consideration to the rest of your colleagues by ensuring people saw that. Um, is there any discussion or debate on Counsel Bressi's proposed amendment to add that definition to the bylaw? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. I think I'm waiting for one more in chambers. Thank you. Uh, that motion carries unanimously. Um, Counsel Bressi?
Um, oh, my apologies, Mayor Given. I want to make a motion after we vote on this amendment. My apologies.
Okay. So that was, uh, that was the amendment. And so now we can move on to third reading as amended. Any discussion or debate on third reading as amended? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Counsel Bressi, did you say you had something following that vote on third reading?
Yeah, I've got a motion, but also something I realized is I, I've got a question I'd like to ask about the last motion that I already knew the answer to, so I was comfortable voting. But I think for the benefit of our public watching, could I ask a question about our business bylaw?
Sure.
I'm, I'm just curious. We heard concerns raised about information being shared with the Chamber of Commerce or potentially other parties. Could administration just share with, share with counsel what the intention is in terms of information sharing for the data we collect for this? Are we going to be sharing information about individual businesses? Are we going to be sharing industry-wide? Just what's, what's the intention of sharing information we gather under this?
Director Glavine?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yeah, so the, the intent of the information is for economic development purposes and emergency response purposes. Uh, so any of the information that the public will see would only be aggregate information and it wouldn't have any of the personal, um, any identifiable information of the specific businesses that are captured um, by business licensing. Uh, yeah. So just to restate, it's for economic development purposes with business attraction retention, uh, and for emergency responses.
Great. Thank you. And then I, on a completely different topic, I do have a motion I'd like to make that's a bit of a pet motion for me that, again, I emailed to counsel. And the motion is direct administration to create a page on the city website with information for residents about door-to-door sales, including buyer's rights under provincial legislation, identification requirements for sellers, and how complaints can be made to the province and city. And in spring 2021, advertise this information through city social media channels. And just to speak to this, we've just passed a bylaw that licenses door-to-door sales. And I think that when we license something, it gives a stamp of our approval to it, whether we mean to or not. When somebody could show a city, a city license that says, hey, the city is okay with what I'm doing. And I know I had a personal experience la, last year where I had a gentleman who was selling things door-to-door show up at my door and commit complete fraud. I agreed to a contract with him. And between the time when that I signed that contract and he sent it to his head office, he actually raised the monthly fee that I was supposed to pay by $30 a month. And then I had a heck of a time canceling that contract. His head office said, well, it's what you signed. I said, well, no, it's not what you signed. And he said, well, our policy is you had 24 hours to cancel it and you didn't do it within that 24 hours, when I hadn't been circulated the new contract within that time. So I had a heck of a time fighting this. Eventually, I only got out of this contract because I found a lawyer representing this company in a class action lawsuit in Texas and got ahold of that lawyer who then called head office. And I got out of it because I'm somebody who's aggressive and knows how to do that and had the time to fight it. I think there's a lot of residents in our city who wouldn't have been able to get out of it like I did. What I was completely unaware of at the time was I actually had really strong protections under provincial law to cancel the, to cancel the contract and have my money paid back by, by, by money held by the province in trust that companies have to put, put up as a security. And I had no idea that there was those provincial rules. I had no idea to complain to the province because all I saw when he showed up at my door was a City of Grand Prairie logo and a City of Grand Prairie license. And I did contact the city and was, uh, and just, there's limited recourse you have from the city other than complaining about the person. There's strong recourse you have under provincial legislation. And I think if we're going to put our stamp of approval on these people, who I've heard stories, I'm not the only one. I've heard stories out in the community of other people being scammed by door-to-door. Most of them are outstanding people who I'm sure are being nothing but honest. But there are those few that do victimize our residents. And I think if we're going to give the stamp of legitimacy to them by giving them a city business license, we should also arm our residents with the information they need to find recourse if our residents find themselves needing to be in a place of recourse. And so I hope counsel will support this motion. It's low cost to us, but it could save major costs for our residents in the future.
Okay. Thanks, Counsel Bressi. Um, so Counsel Bressi has brought forward a motion arising from the business license bylaw discussion, uh, directing administration to, uh, provide information to residents on the city's website, um, and take another number of other measures related to direct selling or door-to-door sales. Um, and just sort of recapping, I see Counsel Blackburn has returned and want to make sure Counsel Blackburn's up to date. Uh, Counsel Blackburn, I believe you would have also seen that motion, uh, via email as, as I think we all did. Counsel Bressi forwarded it ahead of time. Um, is there any discussion or debate on Counsel Bressi's motion? Um, I'll just say, uh, I'm not going to support the motion, uh, not because I disagree with anything that Counsel Bressi just said. Um, but I just think as a matter of course, um, I don't, I don't think this, I think this arises because we're talking about the business license bylaw, but I don't think it has to do with the business license bylaw we just passed. I think this is, uh, some work that counsel is going to be directing administration to do and are, I think, good practices for us to say, how does this work fit with other work, uh, that may be going on in the departments? Um, how much will this work cost? All those typical questions that I think we answer through our committee process. Um, I would support referring this issue to the appropriate standing committee so we can have a discussion with staff so counsel could, could have appropriate time and space to think about whether that rises to the level of priority that, um, that matches the amount of resources that are be required. And I have, with, in fairness, I have no idea about the amount of resources Counsel Bressi might have. Um, but that's why we have our committee structure, so that we can do this kind of work there with administration where we have some space to ask a bunch of questions, um, rather than here at council where we're saying, go and do it. Um, and I'm not satisfied that about the answers to all those questions. And I would have to, uh, even though the issue sounds like it's worthy and of merit, um, I think doing that through the committee would, would make, uh, make more sense for me. I would recommend that the council follow that process and either defeat the motion and refer the issue to standing committee, um, or if somebody wanted to, um, amend the motion to direct that issue to standing committee. Uh, but I won't be able to support it as worded right now. Um, I don't see anybody else in the queue. Uh, so I'll go to Counsel Bressi to close.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Given. I, if it gets defeated, then I'm happy to bring it up to standing committee. I will be bringing it up to standing committee. But I think we're asking the, we're asking administration to put together, to make a webpage and a couple social media posts that's not generating new information, just putting information that I would hope that our administration already knows if they're license, if they're giving licensee, licenses to door-to-door sales. And so I understand going through committee, but is it worth all the ti, all the time and effort it takes to have something relatively simple go through committee? I don't know, but I'll leave that up to counsel.
Okay. Thanks, Counsel, Counsel Bressi. I will call for the vote on Counsel Bressi's motion. Please vote. Thank you. And I'll look to Counsel Blackburn. How do you vote?
Opposed.
Counsel Blackburn votes opposed. And that motion does not carry with four votes in favor and five votes in opposition. Uh, with Counsel Blackburn in opposition in that five. Um, Counsel Bressi, you obviously still have the right to refer that item and even just an email to administration would get that on a, on a standing agenda item on a committee. And so just don't want any member of the public to think that that issue has died because counsel chose not to direct administration to do it today. Counsel Bressi still has the right to bring that up at a standing committee. And, uh, what he said, it sounds like he, he will do that. And so that, that issue is still something that the council is likely to address or will come up at a future meeting. Um, was there any other, I've, you know, this business license bylaw just won't go away. Was there any other items related to the business license bylaw before we move on to correspondence? I don't see anybody in the queue. Uh, then we'll close our unfinished business, move on to correspondence. Um, council will see, uh, under correspondence, item nine point one, uh, course, uh, letter from the County of Grand Prairie with respect to ICF arbitration. Um, I guess I'll just say, uh, you know, my summary of the, uh, letter would be that the County of Grand Prairie objects to going to arbitration. Um, they, in the letter, though, don't propose anything. Um, they make a number of statements about, you know, what they think could happen or should happen, but they actually don't propose any more active measures. Um, my recommendation, uh, from the ICF negotiating process that we've been through over the course of the last three years, uh, would be that counsel, uh, continue the path that we're on with moving forward to arbitration and defining the scope of that arbitration with the County of Grand Prairie. Uh, I would recognize that there are a number of issues that counsel supported, uh, in principle. Um, and I'm, and a number of other issues that were more administrative in nature that I think, that came up through the ICF process that both parties were willing to work on. Um, I think we can very easily define what is in scope and out of scope. I, I think there's lots of cases where the city and county are really not that far apart or willing to work together on, on many, many issues. And there are, there are one, maybe two fundamental issues, but I think it's very unlikely that mediation will get us to where we need to be, which is resolution. And, and I say resolution, I don't say coming over to the city's, you know, uh, the city's answer. I think the goal here should be to get resolution to this issue. Um, and I think the best way to do that will be through arbitration. Um, my recommendation would be that we receive the letter from the County of Grand Prairie for information. Uh, and I would note that our administration is continuing to work with the County of Grand Prairie on establishing the potential scope of any arbitration. Um, and administration has the ability to bring forward, uh, any updates or changes, um, that the administration identifies, uh, the joint administrations identify. So, uh, that would be my recommendation to receive this letter for information. I see Counsel Blackburn?
I would move that we receive this correspondence for information.
Thanks, Counsel Blackburn. Uh, any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Counsel Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Um, and, uh, we did have one item of delegation business, um, that has, I think, generally been dealt with in some of our business license bylaw discussion. Uh, if anybody wanted to make a motion to receive for information, Counsel Friesen?
Thank you. Yeah, I would move that we, uh, receive Mr. Sird's presentation for information.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counsel Friesen. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing Counsel Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Uh, just in that I don't know.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Uh, just in that I don't know if Mr. Sird is still watching, so I asked if possible that administration follow up with him. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Council Clayton. I note from the city clerk that she identified that Mr. Sird is still on and listening to the webcast. And so he will be informed, but, uh, absolutely appreciate making that step. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Councilor Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
That motion carries unanimously. And with that, uh, we have no notice of motion and so we'll enter our recess. We will return for scheduled delegations at six PM. We have one delegation on the agenda for this evening. Presentation from, uh, the Creekside condominium, uh, development. And so council will return at six PM to hear that presentation and conclude our council member reports. Thank you very much, and we're in recess.
Hi Doris. And Alexa, are you my delegations for six o'clock to do with the Creekside?
Yes, I, yes, I am.
Excellent. I just wanted to confirm that's who I am looking at on our Zoom feed. So if you wouldn't mind, just turning off your video and just muting yourself for a few minutes until Mayor Given gets the meeting going. He'll invite you to come on in just a few minutes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I think we're just about ready here. Okay, we'll start off the second half of the Grand Prairie City Council meeting. We are back for our scheduled delegations. I understand that we have a delegation from the Creekside Condo Association who wanted to make a presentation to council. So for those members of the delegation from Creekside, we'd invite you to turn your cameras and microphones on. That's what qualifies as joining us at the presenter's table in this digital Zoom council meeting. Hello there. I see somebody named Doris or a screen with Doris and a screen with Chris come up. Welcome to both of you. You can imagine that you're at our presenter's table in city council chambers. We'd invite you, and hello Joanne, we'd invite you to introduce yourselves. You have about five minutes or so to make your presentation, five, 10 minutes. And there'll be an opportunity for council to ask some questions and then, and then we'll take it from there. So if you just each introduce yourselves and we'll give it over to you to make your presentation. I should say that council does have your presentation in our agenda package. Welcome.
Thank you. So my name is Chris and I am the Vice President of the Creekside Condo Board. Would the others like to introduce themselves?
I'm Joanne Woodworth and I'm the Treasurer with the Creekside Condo Board.
And Doris, I think you're still muted.
Sorry, I thought I took it off. My name is Doris Knott and I'm a member of the Creekside Board.
Welcome to all three of you.
We appreciate. So we appreciate you guys taking the opportunity here to, or giving us the opportunity to present to you guys today. So I'd just like to start out by saying that the purpose of this presentation is not to have the taxes reduced for the city of Creekside. What we're looking to do is potentially increase the services that the city provides to us. Because we do obviously pay municipal city taxes. But we also have duplicate services that the Creekside Condo Association or Condo Corporation is responsible for. Because the city doesn't provide us with some of these services. So the information that we have, we took from, the initial thing was taken from the chart that was published, where did my city tax dollars go? And so the numbers were crunched by our treasurer. And so she, what she came up with was a chart that kind of shows the, the payments that, or the taxes that, that the city, or that we are paying to the city versus the duplicate services that we are required to pay. So it's on the, it's the third page of this, this document that they sent, or that she sent into you guys. So you can see under the engineering and environment section there. So we pay an average of $7.54 per resident for these services. But on top of that, we're also responsible to pay for our own city lighting, garbage, fire hydrant maintenance, litter station maintenance, and storm sewers and, and water repairs. And this year we had some substantial water repairs that, because of the aging infrastructure that Creekside has. And so unfortunately with these added expenses, we would be, at some point, we're going to be forced to raise the condo fees for the people that live in Creekside. You can also see here that we do pay a portion of transit, but the transit does not actually go into, into the community. The closest transit, I guess the bus stop, I guess, is located kind of just outside of the community. So it is actually a fair walk for some of the residents within the community because, well, we have seniors and stuff that live here and it's hard for them to get there. We also have a playground within the, the community that we do pay taxes towards playground maintenance. But we are responsible for 100% of the payments, of the repairs for that, that playground. So it's, the other thing that we have there is snow removal. Again, we're paying $8.91. But we are completely responsible for the snow removal within Creekside. We have a budget of about $100,000 a year for the snow removal within the community. So we don't get any, and I, we don't get any services directly within the community for snow removal, even though we are paying part of the, part of our taxes towards that. And then of course, we do have that summer road repair as well. So we pay a portion of that. But again, we're responsible for all of the, the maintenance on the roads within the community. So based on the numbers that Joanne came up, we pay about 750, the community pays about $750,000 annually worth of taxes to the city. But we really don't get a, really our share of the, of the benefits from paying that, those, those taxes. And like I said, we do understand that all residents have to pay taxes within the community. But we're just looking to have kind of a, hopefully looking to have the city maybe increase some of the services, maybe take some of the burden off of the, the residents within Creekside. This is kind of an interesting community because it kind of, it's kind of two spectrums. There's a lot of the people that live in this community are people that are just starting out, you know, buying their first property. And then we also have on the other side of the spectrum, we have a lot of older people, retired people within the community. So it's, it's hard, some of those, it would be hard for them to really swallow some of the increases that the, the condo board would have to, to put on them if we did have to increase the condo fees. We have fortunately for now been able to hold those condo fees, but who knows in the future, right? Because we have, you know, everything is obviously getting expensive, more expensive as, as you guys would definitely understand. So really what we're looking for is potentially some, some assistance with snow clearing, maintaining street lighting within the community, ground and maintenance services during the summer, waste and garbage removal, and possibly some increases to the city transit availability within the community. When it comes to the, to the garbage, garbage and recycling program, we, we pay to the city in order for us to basically have access to the eco station. Because we don't actually get any recycling within the community. We have worked out with our, with a private company to come in and do our basic recycling, but we have no yard waste. We have none of that pickup within Creekside. Even though as city taxpayers, we are paying for a portion of that. But again, we're not receiving those services. So really what the, the goal of all of this, what we're trying to accomplish here is to allow the, the, the condo corporation to keep upgrading some of the infrastructure, upgrade common fencing grounds, kind of make the community a really enjoyable place for people to live in. But because of the increased costs and the, some of the excessive costs that we have to, we have to carry, it's hard for the condo board to, or the condo corporation to actually do that. So we have set up a, a nonprofit society through some of the residents as far as being able to upgrade the playground equipment and, you know, maintain that equipment. But as of right now, the corporation is in charge of doing all of that. So the negatives of us not, if this doesn't work out, if we don't get, you know, kind of what we're looking for assistance from the city, then unfortunately the infrastructure will, will potentially deteriorate. Also, common fences within the community will, you know, be dilapidated, they'll start to be run down. And, and hopefully, and not that I would ever want this to happen, but the playgrounds within the community, you know, potentially could become unsafe if it continues to deteriorate. So what we're looking for is just assistance from the, the city with, with some of these services. So that we are not necessarily required to pay duplicate services, or duplicate for these same services. We realize that with the whole COVID-19 pandemic, all of this stuff, it, it has left, you know, the city resources stretched to limit. But at the same time, it's, you know, it's it's stretched the limits of, you know, a lot of the community members within Creekside as well. There are numerous people that are, you know, unemployed. So the corporation is, you know, having to deal with delinquent accounts and non-payment of condo fees, non-payment of water, all of that kind of stuff. And so we realize that it is difficult for, for people within Creekside, but also that it's difficult for the people within the city as well. And one other thing that I just wanted to bring up, and I, I don't really know, you know, how this can be addressed through city council, if maybe it can be, you know, passed on to the right departments within the city. But one thing that we have noticed within Creekside is even though we do pay for police and enforcement services within Creekside, or within this community, we do not get adequate service from the city of Grand Prairie bylaw. They, at some points, have actually refused to come in and actually provide services within the community because they are under the impression that because we are deemed private property, they do not have to respond to the, the concerns of the citizens within the community. So this ranges from neighbor disputes to dilapidated vehicles on the roads, unregistered, uninsured vehicles on the road that within any other part of Grand Prairie city bylaw would deal with that, but they don't actually deal with it for us within Creekside. And so, you know, we do, we were wondering if there was any way that, you know, somebody within the, the departments of the city could look into that and possibly get a resolution for us with that. I think that's about all I have to, to present right at this moment. You said that there was possibly some questions that the councillors, city councillors would have for us. I mean, I guess I could give it back to you guys to, to ask those questions.
Sure, absolutely. Well, thank you very much for the presentation. There is an opportunity for any council member to ask any questions of a delegation and I'll just look to see if there are council members that have a question for you. There are a couple popping up in my queue here. Councillor Bressi.
Great, thanks for presenting to us today and thanks for serving on your condo association board. I've talked to friends, that's, sometimes we think we as council have a tough job because we have to be really responsive to the people we live sort of near to. I think you've got a job that's even more responsive than, than us and it's often a tough one. So thank you so much for that service you do to your neighbors. Just two questions for you is, one, how many units do you have inside of Creekside?
There are 298 units within Creekside.
Then I'm just doing some quick math. Okay, great. And then you said, and, and you said your total budget is $750,000 a year?
No, that's what we pay in taxes to annually. The city collects $750,000 annually from our community.
Gotcha. So what would the average house be paying in condo association fees within Creekside then, ish?
So, so our condo fees within Creekside are $175 a month.
Okay. And then, last question is, I'm just trying to understand in your presentation, you have this financial breakdown table and along the very top row underneath average city, you've got 318 and under average Creekside. Am I understanding right that that's what you figure the average property tax bill, bill is for a city house versus a Creekside house?
I'm actually going to pass it over to, to Joanne because she was actually the one that prepared this, so.
Yes, that would be, that's what we took just as an approximate figure, would be 218. Some of the residents pay more, of course, but that would be probably the lowest one that's, that's paid here.
Great, awesome, thank you, I appreciate it.
Can I interject here for just a second? Because one other fact that while we pay our condo fees, we also pay an additional amount on our water every three months because at one point, we had a certain amount of money that we used to have from our condo fees that used to go towards our water. And last year, or the year before, before this board, in order to alleviate some of the problems with having to raise condo fees, what they did is they cut the allowable amount for water in half. So now because of that, a lot of residents on top of that, every three months are paying anywhere from $100 to $350 extra for their water in order to be able to maintain as much as we can the services that we, that we do provide.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for that. And Councillor Thiessen was also in the queue with a question.
Yeah, thank you very much Mayor Given and thanks for bringing this back to this council. I, I think on our previous council, we had similar, a similar delegation for Creekside that came forward. And yeah, so I guess my question for you, Mr. Tubman, is in regards to the different services that you get or don't get. I guess I'm mainly looking at snow removal and road maintenance right now. Those seem to be fairly decent costs. What are the, how many times a year in, in Creekside do you figure you get like a snow removal and/or city services assessing the road, filling potholes and stuff like that?
So I'm trying to think about last year. I think we probably had the snow removed maybe six times total. And in order for us to cut down on the cost this year, we did, we just piled it up within the community. At one point, the, the corporation was hauling the snow away, but we're just piling it up this time. And then, of course, we have sanding. As far as the actual pothole repair and that kind of stuff, I would have to, to look into that a little bit further. I don't have those numbers right in front of me. I don't know if Joanne maybe can, can maybe grab those numbers or if she happens to know them.
Sorry, I don't have the numbers in front of me. I know they did some road repairs, just they, we had to repave some streets and we did have some road maintenance because we had some infrastructure damage last winter. So there was just some emergency maintenance we had to do. But other than that, I wouldn't be able to say what the cost was.
Okay, no, thank you, thank you for those, those answers. Now, I guess my, my follow-up question to that would be, is this all like the six, the six snow removals and the repairs of the road, that's all privately organized? Or is that city of Grand Prairie vehicles out there in Creekside?
It's all through private companies. We don't get any, we don't get any services within, from the city within Creekside as far as road maintenance or snow removal or garbage pickup, anything like that.
Okay, no, that's, that's pretty fair. I guess the last, the last thing I have to ask is, you mentioned something about bylaw. Not coming through because it's a private property. Is there, outside of the condo association, is there an ownership group that you guys can, or have talked to or could talk to at all in regards? I'm not trying to slough this off, I just want to know sort of where your chain of command rides after this.
So the condo board is, is the talk. There is nothing above that. There is no ownership group or anything like that.
Okay, no, that's exactly what I wanted to hear, thank you.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen. One question that I had was just with, with water. So do, do, does each resident, each dwelling unit receive a bill from Aqua Terra? Or do they receive the water billing from the condo association?
Condo board receives a, a monthly bill from, from Creekside. Each house has its own water meters. So our property management company goes around, checks everybody's meters and then it's proportioned out based on usage. And then they were, they're sent a bill every three months for that, that water usage.
I, I thought it might be something like that. And so how does the, how does the condo association set the rate for water? Like, does it match? Do you have any sense of whether it matches the typical rate that Aqua Terra charges a, a residence for property anywhere else in the city?
I don't have that. Doris, do you happen to, to know that?
No, I don't. The only thing I do know is like I said, first when I moved in here, up to $175 a month of condo fees, 66 of that was allocated towards the water on a monthly basis. And the pre, the previous board, for whatever reason, I guess it just got expensive, as Chris was saying, all the infrastructure and all the expenses that have cropped up over the last couple of years with our infrastructure deteriorating and getting aged. Instead of actually raising the condo fees, what they did is they cut the allowable amount for water in half. And now we only have $33 a month of water and anything over and above that for actual water usage, this is where the bill comes in every three months. Most people in the past, after three months with a $66 allowance, would get a credit or maybe just break even. Now we are hearing stories of people having actual $300, $350 extra bills on top of the $33 a month that they're paying towards their water. So it's getting a little, little crazy, I would say, for young families that have small children and have to do a lot of laundry and dishwashing and baths and whatever. So, so I can imagine what it must be like to me because I know as senior people who reside in here, it's, it's taking a little chunk from us as well. So this is how they allow for, instead of raising the cost of the condo fees, they cut the water allowable allowance in half.
Yeah, no.
I've got the information and it is billed at the Aqua Terra rates to the, to the residents of Creekside.
It is, it is billed at the Aqua Terra rates, okay. That's, yeah, okay, I was just curious about that. That certainly $66 a month seems like on the low. I'm trying to think about my, I guess with my total Aqua Terra bill, that does include recycling and garbage, you know, curbside garbage pickup and then water and wastewater. I know it's not $66 a month, but there are a bunch of other things included. So I appreciate that, just trying to get a sense of the overall picture. Okay, any other questions, the delegation? Councillor Bressi, I think I see you back in the queue.
Yeah, thank you. Just while we're talking about Aqua Terra, I just want to make sure I'm doing my math and understanding your table right. Are you folks paying about $9 per house per month for recycling?
We don't see any of the actual Aqua Terra bills. They just come through Key. As for the recycling, the only thing we have is the roadside pickup for paper, bottles, plastic. We don't get any yard waste removed. It's, so, but I have never seen what the actual cost is that we pay to Aqua Terra or to our recycling collection person. I don't know if Joanne can address that as the treasurer a little more?
Recycling that is provided, is provided through a, a private company, the, the same company that does our garbage pickup. So it's not through Aqua Terra at all. It's through, through Prairie Disposal.
So I'm just trying to understand, and so, yeah, I get that you're paying Prairie Disposal to pick up your recycling, but then presumably it's going to Aqua Terra after that. And I'm just seeing on the ver, on the table you provided us with your finances, the most bottom and most right cell says, we pay Aqua Terra $2,900 per month for the recycling program. What's that referred to?
That is our recycling. That's what we do to Aqua Terra. And the other thing is, so as Chris mentioned, we get billed, one bill that goes through Key Property Management and Key will take that bill and divide it up between the 298 residents of Creekside, which I don't understand why we do it that way, but this is my first year on the board. Because all of our residents in Creekside do have water meters and I don't understand why our water meters can't be just read as normal residents or other residents of the city and be directly billed, like each individual billed for their water.
Okay, I don't see anybody else in the queue with any other questions. I'll just leave it maybe to the delegation, Doris, Joanne, Chris, if you'd like to provide any closing comments before we close your delegation time.
One other thing I'd like to mention is, just, just a couple weeks ago, a couple members of our board took it upon themselves to set up an ice rink for our children. And so we called the city to see if we would qualify for them like to come and set up this ice rink in our community for us, because, as they do in other areas of the city. And I spoke with one of the firemen at, at one of the fire departments and they were willing to come out and help us. And they were, they weren't even going to flood it for us until they found out that, no, we couldn't do it because we're a condo association and we didn't qualify for that. So again, that's, you know, that sends off a message where we're not really part of the city. We're not getting services from the city. So kind of frustrating.
The, the person that kind of spearheaded that program for the, for the condo board contacted the, the program that you guys have out there that, where they provide the, the equipment or the, the materials and they provide the labor and all of that kind of stuff. And yeah, as soon as they found out that it was for Creekside, it was like, well, you guys are, you know, we are private property, we don't deal with that. And we were denied. So we, we decided as a, as a board to, to take it upon ourselves, take it upon the, the condo board to provide that for the children within Creekside. So yeah, like Joanne said, it's just another example of where, you know, we're not, we're not really getting the services that we, we pay for. And hard to, to foster a spirit of community when you don't get services from the community, right?
Appreciate it and, and I think heard by council. So I don't see anybody else. Oh, Councillor Bressi, did you have one final question?
Yeah, just, just, I just want to touch on that community skate rink. I actually, on our council break, I was just at the neighborhood rink with the other guys in the neighborhood checking out on the progress of our rink. And just for your information, the city with those neighborhood ones provides boards and spikes to drive those boards in the ground, but it doesn't provide, so yeah, you, you didn't get that, but just so you know, it doesn't provide labor and flooding and water and all of that. That's something that myself and my neighbors are doing in our neighborhood for that. The city's got a few that it maintains, but those neighborhood ones that you can request is it just boards and metal spikes that the, that the city provides?
Yeah, I realize I misspoke about the labor and the water, but we were denied the access, we were denied the, the materials, right? We were told that we just, we don't qualify. And so we went out, bought all the materials and fortunately, we had a couple of people within the community that were willing to do that for us and they, they put it all up and it's been super popular. We have kids on that thing non-stop all day long. So it was worth it.
I see Councillor Thiessen's back in the queue again as well.
Yeah, thank you Mayor Given. I guess this is probably more or less a, a question for administration. So just going back to 2015 when, when Creekside came forward with their original proposal, what are, I guess, to anyone in administration who can answer, what are the challenges with the Creekside condominium project in regards to it being built by a private developer and not to the city of Grand Prairie or even Aqua Terra standards? And I guess what is administration's overall view of what may need to be done if we can do anything in regards to this issue? I made it very broad on purpose.
Sure, there to the city manager, Rosso Galante. Rosso.
Okay, yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In, in general, I would say that the answers for all the concerns here we're hearing are based on the, on the corporate structure of, of the condominium association. So in, in Alberta, of course, we have the, the condominium property act and the Creekside condo is incorporated for sure under, under that act with articles of incorporation and probably they have bylaws. So the concept of private roads or private parks or private sidewalks is the key, is the key answer here for, for this situation. So as property tax on each individual unit, they will be paying a certain amount of money for city, as snow removal, for example, or road maintenance. But the particular roads inside the property are considered private roads and responsibility of the corporation. That is the reason that's part of the condominium fee established by the corporation, they charge an, an amount of money for snow removal, for road maintenance, for playground equipment. So those services are currently contracted externally, could be provided by, by the city as, as an, as an independent agreement as well. The, in terms of construction, the, the standards built on those roads and sidewalks are not the same as the, the city standard. There were no inspections done at that time. And that is the reason, this is a private property. Just to give you an example, I can mention similar situation with Inverness Estates, with Aurora Estates, similar situation with Gateway Mall area, Safeway area, Walmart area. The city is not responsible for doing, you know, road maintenance within those areas because they're regulated by. because they're regulated by a, an, a corporate entity. Uh, so for Council Chris, uh, Chris Thieson, I don't know if that is answering your, um, your question. I'm, I'm just trying to provide a generic answer in terms of the, the corporate structure of the, the association versus the city services.
Okay. No, actually that, uh, that did, there's, uh, I'm looking at the report here right now. There's lots of stuff, uh, that just wasn't done up to city specs. The first thing I thought, uh, being familiar with Creekside is the roads aren't really wide enough for transit buses to go up and down as it is. Uh, but I do wonder about, uh, snow removal. I do know that they have lots of speed bumps in and around the, the Creekside complex. Uh, that can sometimes be difficult. Um, and, uh, no sidewalks and then of course, we as a council and as administration, we agreed that we wouldn't be doing as much lawn mowing this year in, in itself. So, I mean, that's another service there. Uh, I do think this, this deserves a, maybe another look at perhaps us exploring a potential alternate agreement, uh, to help provide services potential, but, uh, I'll look to make that motion or someone here around the table can look to make that motion, uh, as we get closer to the end of this meeting. I want to thank you for your answer, Rosso, and, uh, thank you everyone for coming in and, uh, expressing your concerns here.
Thanks, Council Thieson. I guess, you know, I just, that would be one thing. Um, I'm not certain, um, if the delegation has had an opportunity to see the, uh, this isn't the first time Creekside has been to city council, um, as I'm sure you are aware. I'm not sure if you've seen sort of the results of those past, um, presentations. I know that there have been a couple of reports from administration that have been developed and I know that there's change, changeover on, on boards, uh, over time. And so I'm not sure if you've had a chance to see those. Um, certainly that might be something that would be worthwhile, the report that Council Thieson's referencing from 2015. At least give you a little bit of insight into some of the thinking of the city and some of the, um, legal, the perceived legal barriers, um, that are maybe leading to some of the answers that you got. So that's not a, that's not an answer to your question, um, or the issue that you raised. It's just a piece of advice or a suggestion. If you haven't seen some of those past reports, um, don't hesitate to reach out. I'm sure they're still available on the city's website. And if not, uh, contact the city. I'm sure we'd be able to find them for you and provide them so you could see at least, at least some of the discussion that has happened in the past about this, uh, exact same issue that you're, that you're discussing tonight. I don't, uh, again, I don't see anybody else in the, in my queue here, uh, to speak or for questions. So I think that that's going to be the close of our delegation. Thank you very much again for, uh, presenting to council this evening. And, uh, you're more than welcome to stick around and watch the rest of the council meeting. We, uh, will deal with delegation business, um, uh, actually just after we close the, this delegation session here, uh, since we have no public hearings this evening and, uh, you'll, uh, hear, uh, what direction council chooses to take with your requests that you brought forward.
You guys, uh, taking, taking the time to meet with us.
Of course. Thank you. Thank you very much for taking the time, uh, to sign in and join us. So we just ask you to turn off your microphones and your cameras and that's sort of the stepping away from the presenter's table, uh, the digital equivalent to stepping away from the presenter's table. Thank you, uh, thank you three. Um, and, uh, we will close the scheduled delegation portion of our agenda. Um, we have no public hearings this evening and so that does bring us to delegation business. I would look for a motion from council, um, with respect to the presentation we just heard. Councilor Thieson.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'm going to take a stab at, uh, I was just sort of trying to cobble it together with my pen here, but I would move that, uh, council, uh, direct administration to bring a report to the appropriate standing committee in regards to Creekside condo association seeking city services and the potential transfer of common lands. I guess I could have said to the appropriate standing committee at the end, but.
No, I thi, I think you said that at the start. So, uh, no, I, uh, that sounds like it's an order. I mean, essentially a fairly broad, uh, referral to the appropriate standing committee where administration could present additional information, um, and council could have a discussion there about whether, um, what direction they might like to take the issue. Discussion debate on that motion. Councilor Bressi.
Great. Uh, thank you. I'm just, I'm just curious. So I've got in front of me the 2015 report, which was circulated to council today by our city manager on this, on this issue. And I'm just trying to figure out, is there, is there new information that we're hoping to get if we forward this report or are we just hoping to have that old report brought forward again so that it can become this council's attention? Just what are you hoping to get out of this?
Council Thieson.
Yeah, so, uh, largely, uh, education and direction and seeing where this council sort of sits, uh, in regards to Creekside. And obviously if we do something for this, then we're going to have to look at the broader context of what else is in the city of Grand Prairie here. Uh, it's, it's a worthwhile discussion when you, when you consider that, uh, you know, they're still paying, they're still paying a certain amount of taxes. It may mean a levy that we could have, but I am sure with the brilliant minds around this council table, uh, based off of the information we already have and any new ideas that may crop up in administration and around the committee table, uh, we might be able to find something that could work. And so five years from now, we won't see this again potentially if we find a happy medium.
Okay. Okay. Uh, any, uh, other discussion on Council Thieson's motion, the referral motion to the appropriate standing committee? I don't think I see anybody, uh, ringing in. So then I will call for the vote on Council Thieson's motion of referral. Uh, please vote. Thank you. Uh, Council Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Uh, and that motion carries unanimously. Uh, so that item, uh, will come back to the appropriate standing committee. Um, I see that our delegation is still online, listening into the council meeting. And so, uh, we will, uh, ensure through our administration that we're in contact with the condo boards that you're aware of when this is going to show up on a committee agenda. So you can follow along with that committee meeting and just, uh, see what happens. But those are certainly public meetings, um, where the agendas are published in advance. You'd be able to see, um, see that when it's coming forward. Um, Councilor Bressi, I see you in the queue.
Yeah, thank you. Just something I wanted to flag with, uh, administration, because I'll ask it when this report comes forward, but it seems, it seems kind of odd to me. It seems to me reading this that these residents are paying the same fee for Aqua Terra recycling as I'm paying at my house where I get curbside pickup. And maybe I'm misunderstanding the, it or so, maybe somebody else's, I don't know. But just flagging with administration when this report does come forward, I'd love to know more about how the Aqua Terra recycling fees work in this. So don't do anything now. Don't need to make a motion. Just wanted to let administration know I'll be asking that question.
Okay. 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 Thanks, Council Bressi. Uh, so I think that handles all of our delegation business from our, uh, scheduled delegations this evening. And, uh, that can take us into council member reports. Uh, I think I had first Counselor O'Toole with the Combat sports commission.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Uh, we are down to the final few days on, uh, the combat sports commissions of Alberta, uh, coming up with a game plan to restart the programs in the province of Alberta. Looks like it'll be in 2021. Uh, I have my final meeting tomorrow at about, uh, three o'clock and hopefully we can have it all finalized. So when things do sort of turn around, we have a game plan and ready to go at it again. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Uh, Council Thieson, I think you had Downtown Association.
Uh, yes, I did. Uh, one sec here. Uh, sorry, I had them all dated. Um, one sec. All right. So just a quick meeting. Uh, Downtown Association met on Wednesday, November 25th, uh, which we, uh, went over our financials. Updated the board on the funding approval for the facade and grants and construction communication from the city of Grand Prairie. Um, we had a little update on our legal dispute over, uh, the watering baskets, uh, that are happening there. Uh, and, uh, update on the Santa parade, uh, the new plan that we have going forward with the Santa parade, uh, which is really no, no Santa parade is happening, but there are a few things that we're doing. The lighting of the Christmas tree that happened this past Sunday, uh, I believe. And, um, and moving on from there. I also talked a bit about the mass bylaw implementation and saw what business owners were giving, kind of, what kind of feedback they were giving us. Everything seemed to be going pretty good there. A report from Vegas Days, uh, actually a lot of, a lot of downtown business owners were really happy with the three day Vegas days. Uh, they said it helped to, to keep social distancing and people could come and go at their leisure rather than cram in all in one night. So it's a potential that we might stretch, uh, Vegas days over two or three nights again in the future. Uh, and outside of that, uh, it was pretty standard fare meeting.
Okay. Thanks, Council Thieson. Uh, Counselor Plod, I think you had Economic Development Advisory Committee?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Yeah, uh, last week we had an economic advisory committee. It'll be the last, uh, committee with, uh, that group of people. Hopefully some people have re-applied. We'll see who gets appointed. But, uh, some, some great, great work was done by some members at large and I was happy to see the contribution they put into it. Um, some things we specifically discussed last meeting were three Ps and some opportunities for the city to start looking at some potential three Ps and how that could look. And also angel investing was something that was, we've been chatting about of, you know, one of the concerns with COVID is how is, how our business is going to get access to capital. So, um, some good conversations about those and look, look forward to seeing some hopeful motions come out of that committee to council here in the new year.
Thanks, Counselor Plod. I think you're actually next up on the list anyhow with Airport Commission. Why don't you continue on?
So Council Thieson, myself had an airport commission meeting a couple of weeks ago as well. Um, of course with COVID, the numbers are not pretty. We're down about 80% month over month. Uh, October, we had 7,199 passenger movements. So we were closing in on 500,000, uh, pre-COVID. So it's a pretty dramatic drop. Um, a lot of conversation ended up being, uh, around what our budget could look like next year. And so, um, that conversation will continue to happen and we'll be bringing something to council. But, uh, like most airports, you're probably seeing around the, the country, not, not pretty news. Fortunately for our airport, we still are getting some movements and there's, there's light at the end of the tunnel, so to speak, but, uh, it has been an eye opener to see what could happen. Long-term impacts of some of our regional airports and some of the larger airports.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Oh, sorry, just on that, there's still no flights to Edmonton, uh, direct flights to Calgary, but none to Edmonton.
Thanks, Counselor Plod. Um, Council Bressi, I think you had, uh, Grand Prairie Sport Connector.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Given. There wasn't a whole lot new to report on the sport connector, but just reporting that two initiatives I'm excited for are still well underway. Uh, one is the inclusion grants to give local coaches, uh, support on inclusion initiatives. And thanks to some federal funding, seems like it'll be free of charge to our community. And again, that's not just hour-long workshops saying, hey, please include every kid. It's actual nuts and bolts training about a kid shows up with sensory issues. How do you get him participating with your team? So it's a pretty intensive training that'll be really great for our coaches and more importantly for kids in our region. And then also the Make It F grant, uh, where the sport connector is training up 12 coaches to give them certifications so they can be excellent coaches in the community for years to come. And they're getting training now and then in the new year, they'll be going into three of our schools to run a few months of after-school sports for kids that usually can't afford or their parents can't drive them towards club sports. And, uh, there was around 20 applicants. There were 12 coaches selected and they're being trained now. So just two exciting progress updates.
Thanks, Council Bressi. Um, Council Thieson, I think you had Grand Spirit Foundation.
Yeah, this is my big, big report. I was ready to do that first. It was first on the list because on, uh, November 19th and 20th, we had our strategic planning session, uh, over the course of the, over the next few years. Um, and some of the things that, uh, crept up on there, we did a 2019 needs assessment refresher and, uh, it became abundantly clear to the board that, uh, not with the, with the Spirit River housing complex going up, the 24 units, uh, that are happening in Spirit River, um, that, uh, the next build is something that we need to consider. And, uh, that was, uh, the focus actually turned right towards the city of Grand Prairie, which is great news for us because we're hoping to, to have those conversations about potential lands with, uh, Grand Spirit and I think our, uh, CEO, uh, Mr. Steve Madden is well aware that, uh, the next, the next bill's got to be a big build in to better take care of the needs and not just our seniors, but also our families and individuals. And there was a bit of a discussion on the individual, uh, side of it because part of, part of what, what the strategic planning sort of led us to was our 2020 organization and capacity review. And I think council needs to be aware of this. Um, it was largely, uh, we had Bataby Consulting come in and take a look at how the organization is set up and how it all sort of filters up to, uh, Steve Madden. Uh, and essentially, uh, we need about two or three, maybe even four people underneath Steve Madden, uh, to help balance the management of the Grand Spirit organization. So he can be doing what he's supposed to be doing as the CEO of the organization, which is having those conversations with provincial partners, uh, funders, uh, that are from the private sector and, uh, putting together housing build opportunities. But he's just, uh, inundated with, uh, with paperwork and that's because they've got a lot of housing, uh, bodies that, uh, you know, filter right up to the top. And with nobody in front of him to intercept those, uh, Steve has a stack of papers this high just on COVID alone. Uh, so especially when we did the shutdown with, with, uh, back in the spring and, and summer with, uh, some of our seniors lodges, uh, a lot of that filter up went right to Steve. And so it was actually impeding him from doing the, the, the job that he's being paid to do. Um, so we're working on that right now, uh, and I, I, I stress that to council because I know a lot of our discussion around municipal housing corporations sort of, the bottom fell out of that. And we said, well, we have Grand Spirit and they're good to go. But just like the city of Grand Prairie, they have to build up their organization as well before we start downloading housing projects on them. So it may be, uh, part of the discussion that we have when we start looking at lands with Grand Spirit, uh, seeing like, how can we help you or how can we get you up there? Uh, there, with the funding that we have currently available in Grand Spirit, it means that there won't be any new ass that we can actually try to find a way to build from within the organization and some of that's going to come through attrition. Uh, but, uh, we, we feel like we have a structure. We're just going to need time to put that in place and to get the right people in order right underneath Steve. Um, so anyways, it was a very worthwhile, uh, exercise over two days. Uh, proud to say that, uh, almost everybody unanimously says the next build has to happen in the city of Grand Prairie as long as we can provide them that land and that partnership. Uh, from there, um, we had a bit of an outbreak. Uh, it was sort of a, a, a lowly advertised outbreak, uh, but it was at the Wild Rose Manor. Uh, one of our Alberta Health Services staff members who works at the Wild Rose Manor, uh, did test positive for COVID, um, and which we had to, uh, have 31 residents, uh, in the lodge go into isolation and take all their tests. Now word came back just today, uh, that all are clear of COVID, which is great. It's, uh, not a scary thing. Uh, we're just waiting on two more tests from, uh, from residents who were not in contact with the Alberta Health Services employee that works at the Wild Rose Manor. So that was a bit of good news, but we were working very closely with Alberta Health Services and the CDC as well, which told us to treat it as if it were an outbreak before anything got out of hand. And so we did and nothing bad came out of it. Uh, finally, we had, we were supposed to have a meeting on November 27th, uh, but due to the CDC guidelines, they didn't want anybody connected with Grand Spirit staff to, uh, expose themselves to the public. So we didn't actually have that meeting. So we did pass a few motions, uh, via, uh, email. One of them was to approve $400,000 from Saddle Hills for the Spirit River 24 unit built. Uh, so that was really great. And another one that was really great was that there was no recommended changes to the rent ceilings for the 2021 year. So all that passed unanimously and is a good news story. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thanks, Council Thieson. Uh, Council Bressi, I believe you had South Peace Regional Archives Society.
Yeah, th- thank you. I got to go as the alternate to the archives, which was fun to get to see a bit more about how that organization, organization works. Uh, there was some talk about the move to, to, uh, to Center 2000 a few years in the future. And there's some work being done with the organization to secure funding from funding partners to make that happen. Uh, heads up to council, they might be going after some provincial funding and doing some provincial advocacy, noticing that the Glenbow and Calgary just got some provincial funding and saying, hey, you shouldn't forget about us up in the north too. And so there could be a letter of support request coming to council. So just a heads up about that. Uh, we, the other significant thing we talked about was just COVID-19 protocols and getting formal approval from the board for what they were already doing. And I'm happy to report that these recent restrictions that came down for the province didn't affect the archives at all because they're already going over and above.
That's great. Thanks very much, Council Bressi. Uh, and Council Thieson, you had Nighthawk Recreation Area Board.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Given. Uh, yeah, it's been a busy week of meetings. Uh, so Nighthawk, uh, Nighthawk's board met on November 24th. Um, as, uh, and just, uh, to report on things, I think that would interest council. Uh, snowmaking is complete for the season, probably as all of you know, and the hill is good to go. Uh, lots of pictures this weekend coming from that. Um, uh, they are speaking to the County of Grand Prairie Council, actually earlier today, they were on November 30th, uh, in making their request for the same asset, the asset of the city, which was 25% of the 1.5 million potential dollars that will go to reclaim the hill. Um, uh, some good news, uh, from our treasurer's report. Last year at this time of year, we were at, as it says here, $600,000 deficit going into the season. Uh, this year through a variety of measures, uh, some being transfer of capital funding into organization, some being, uh, the letting go of staff and some being, uh, you know, finding new ways to make money. Uh, we are entering with a $40,000 to the positive due to the funding that came through over the summer. And as I said before, cutting costs. So it's looking pretty good, but we need a good season in order to balance all of our bills again and get back on the right track. Um, I, as far as the geotechnical work, uh, we're still waiting. It seems like we're waiting forever for that. Um, but, uh, we did get a drop dead date of December 14th being the date. End all BL will, will get all the report back to us by then and then we can start filing. End all be all, we'll, we'll get all the report back to us by then. And then we can start filing that to. Insurance companies, to the province and to the municipalities who are supporting. And uh, finally, if you know anybody who is uh, who loves the hill and wants to take an active part in it, uh currently we have ten uh board members out of a possible fifteen. So we are looking for. Up to five more board members. We can still operate as this, but uh, I'd like to fill that board up and uh, the more people that we have engaged and involved, the better it is for the hill and for the region. So. If you know anybody, ask your friends.
Thanks, Counsel Thieson. Uh, Counsel Bressi, I think you had something with our regional school sites meeting. Are you going to report on that?
Yeah, thank you. So Mayor Given and I got to attend a regional school sites meeting. It was good to connect with the school boards, with all four school boards in our region as well as. Were no elected representatives from the county, but there was some staff from the county. So it was great to talk about. Regional school sites. Uh, the big thing that spurred this meeting is there were some recent municipal government act changes. And. Now we've got about two and a half years to sign an agreement with all the school boards that operate within Grand Prairie. On how we're going to discuss potential future allocations and use of school and municipal reserves. And. So the, the Catholic School Board called everybody together saying. Hey, this means a whole bunch of agreements need to get signed within our region. Uh, they didn't say this, but if I'm doing my math right, I think that that would be seven. Different agreements that would need to be signed in this region. And the Catholic School Board was saying, is there any potential of just. Signing a multi-party agreement and we all go in under one? And I don't know if that's possible or not because we basically had a long conversation about. Just the complexity that the city especially faces in balancing the needs of. Not just four different school boards, but also the need to find land for recreation facilities and parks and trails. And also some of the give and take of being right next to a municipal neighbor that sometimes we're working with, sometimes we're competing with. And it was a. Good conversation to hear a little bit more about what the schools want and share a little bit more about the city from a land use planning perspective. So. I mean, I look forward to hearing what comes from that committee and if Counsel Blackburn can be part of a multi-party agreement that meets the requirements of the act without having to get seven different pieces of paper signed across the region.
Absolutely. Thanks very much, Counsel Bressi. And uh, finally, I think Counsel Thieson, you said you had Peace Library System.
Yeah, like I said, it was a busy, busy week. Uh, throwing the two uh meetings with this guy and all the council stuff. Uh, we didn't need events. It was all meetings. So Peace Library Systems met on uh November twenty-eighth, uh, the full board meeting uh via Zoom uh due to the new COVID protocols. So uh, nobody traveled. Uh, so it was an interesting meeting. Uh, but uh, just some things to, I'd like to highlight, uh, you know, we had uh some revised uh policies. Uh, most of them are just technical revisions. Uh, we also did the election of our committee members and officers. Uh. Now, I'm an automatic elector as the city of Grand Prairie representative, same with the county. So uh, we made it on the executive, which is always great. But just a congratulations to uh Chair Carolyn Kolibaba. For uh being re-elected uh to serve as chair and to Belinda Halabisky uh as uh, as Vice Chair for uh the Peace Library Systems. We also elected uh, as I said, the rest of the executive committee, uh, the personnel committee and the plan of service committee. And an interesting thing to note, uh, as part of our reports, uh, from our consulting services uh department, um, the summer reading clubs were. Uh, a big success uh this summer from June through August. Uh, it may seem like a, a small task, but uh, all in all. Through Peace Library Systems, uh, over the summer, we had uh three hundred and forty-three live views. Of our summer reading clubs. That's kids reading online with actual people. Uh, and then uh, those were recorded. Uh, and kept uh online. And in total, we had fifty-three hundred and twenty-eight views. Uh, most of participants uh staying online for the whole duration. So it was a real good news story. Uh, I think it was like eighty-two percent of people stayed on for the whole. Book, which is great news to hear. That's fifty-three hundred kids that are uh accessing reading through the internet and uh could make me happier, especially if they have nothing else to do. That's all I got.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thieson. Uh, Counsel Clayton, I think you had uh Community Advisory Board on homelessness. And then after that, maybe uh, we'll go to Counselor O'Toole for a presentation.
Just a brief uh report from our uh most recent cab meeting. Uh, we were very excited to invite uh three new members to the group. Uh, Fringenga, Mugaga, Tammy Monroe and Aiden James. And Aiden is a youth representative who attends GPRC. So it was nice. To have the youth perspective on that committee. It's been a while since we had uh youth represented there. Uh, there was one thing of importance or of, of useful information. At that meeting, we had an update in regards to the COVID emergency funds and, and some of the disbursements. Um, and. Just a reminder that there are, you know, dollars going out from the federal government for things such as um, the, the Oasis Winter Emergency Response. Program. So there's money being allocated there for mats, um, as well as uh some emergency funds been put forward from, for winter clothing and, and different expenses there. Uh, in addition, another federal fund of money is helping with some renovations at Rotary House, just some upgrades and. And you know, fixtures and equipment type upgrades. But uh, some of this dollars are being um, over a million dollars in two different federal pots of money. Being dispersed uh through COVID emergency funds that are going out to improve our facilities uh in the, in the needs in regards to um homelessness. So. It was nice to hear some of that information and uh see exactly where some of those dollars were going. And um, that was it from that committee. Thanks.
Thanks, Counsel Clayton. Counsel O'Toole, I believe you had a presentation to make.
Yes, Mayor Given. Uh, I'm representing the uh city of Grand Prairie on the Alberta Bilingual Municipalities Association. And I just received this the other day. It's our uh membership, a certificate. So I'd like to give that to you to post in the city hall here somewhere where you deem it's necessary and appropriate. And I also have a copy of the strategic plan that we worked on earlier this fall. And so we can look at it as well. So.
Thank you. Or mercy.
Mercy.
Uh, Counsel Clayton, would you care to start our council roundtable?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Not a lot to report. Uh, last week, uh, with uh Counselor Plott and Counselor Bressi. Attended a virtual Economic Developers Alberta Conference. Um, special thanks to administration that set it up. So we were able to. Uh, socially distance space uh apart, but we were able to view the conference. Together, which was nice to have a little bit of uh discussion in between sessions and, and talk, you know, bounce around ideas in regards to uh. Sessions, but as well as other opportunities in economic development. So thank you to that department for that. Um, other than that, the rest of my town was just on regular committee business. So, thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Clayton. Counsel O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I just want to remind everybody that International Day for Persons with Disabilities is this December third. And that's a internet Zoom type meeting celebration. And it'll be from twelve till one. And if you're interested in watching that, I can give you the, the Zoom address and passcodes to get through there. Uh, it's always an interesting uh half hour of listening to some things that are going on in the progress of promoting. Uh, the needs of the International Day of People with Disabilities, especially in the Grand Prairie area. Uh, I also have one other item that I want to bring up. On the twenty-first of November, uh Vince Joel. You may know his name from the Wonderland Toy and Hobby, brought in an indigenous artist to sign some comic books. And the reason that uh Vince is involved in this is he's supportive of this. And he bought three thousand copies of these comics. They went on sale Saturday. And they were almost sold out on Monday. Um, this Kyle Charles is from the Whitefish Lake Nation. And uh, he has signed on with Marvel Comics. And I will have a copy of each, of a comic for each of you. And uh, the nice thing about that is Wonderland Toy and Hobby is on the back sleeve. And Marvel is on the front, which is a pretty highlight for the city of Grand Prairie. And uh, it's a, and it's, it's going over extremely well. There are copies and I think it's six different countries. You, you blew it. You get lost. I got four autographed ones myself. But anyhow, I just wanted to let you know there's some in Australia, New Zealand, England, Norway, United States and Canada that have been already. Kind of met their total goal already. So it's a good thing. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Counsel O'Toole. Counsel Bressi?
Sure, Mayor Given. Make me follow that. Uh, well, two things I want to update council about is one, I had a good coffee with Sean Dyer, who's the new CEO of Spinal Cord Injury Alberta. He's based down in Calgary, but he was up in Grand Prairie visiting, getting to know our community and our region. So it was great to see some provincial representation from that organization up here talking about. How to make an even bigger impact for people with spinal cord injuries in, in our city and in our surrounding area. So it was, that was a coffee I quite enjoyed. And then the other, just a preview I'll give council, it's not something I did, it's something that's going to happen in a couple of days. Uh, United Way is doing a massive fifty-fifty raffle where it's got a license with the province to. Rate, to do up to a million dollars for its fifty-fifty. So it's going to be a one-day-only thing. You can buy it, you can buy tickets from six AM to two PM Thursday. Let's make it the biggest fifty-fifty in Grand Prairie history. And let's raise five hundred thousand dollars to give away to charities that impact about twenty-five thousand lives in our region. And also let's give one of our residents of our region five hundred thousand dollars to change their family's life. So Thursday, get your fifty-fifty tickets.
Okay, thanks for the heads up. So we know to, to be ready for that. Uh, Counsel Thieson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, I was going to talk about the comic book. I was going to talk about the fifty-fifty draw. Well, the comic book's on its second print and uh, and yeah, thanks Dylan for that. Uh, just uh, for the record, my brother won the last Edmonton Oilers fifty-fifty draw in the Stanley Cup Final. And pocketed over six hundred thousand dollars. Lucky guy. I'm not asking him to share it, but I think maybe locker runs in the family. Uh, I'm not going to say I'm going to win because I don't want to discourage people to buy that because it's a great cause. So definitely get out there and go. Um, I actually really literally had nothing. I helped friends move this week. We had lots of discussions. About other things uh council-related. Um, but yeah, not a lot of events are, are actually happening. And I think that Tuesday's announcement by the premier was part of that. But I uh wanted to uh, something came up in the news that night. Uh, I have a lot of friends and family that live in the United States of America. So. Obviously, we're all, we, we get inundated with their, with their media all the time. Uh, but with it being Thanksgiving, I saw a report that came up that uh twenty-five percent. Twenty-five percent of American citizens are accessing the food bank at this time of year right now. Now, that's a scary thought for a country of three hundred and seventy-three million dollars. And I'm not trying to depress everybody. I'm just telling you what the stats are there. And in the local context, uh, there is an organization that you can totally support as well as the United Way. And that would be our Salvation Army Food Bank here. So I encourage anyone, if you see somebody like ringing the bells at the kettle, please fill up their, their cup. If you're at the. Safeway, you know, buy their, buy their bags there and help fill up our, our Salvation Army. Because even though we may not know somebody that's hurting in our community, there are always people who are in need. So it's important that we support that. Especially at this time of year. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Thieson. Uh, I'm going to actually go to Counselor Blackburn. Uh, I've just realized that if I didn't catch him in the queue now, it was possible that he was going to get right to the very end and I wouldn't have caught him. So. We'll try to catch him uh in the queue with everybody else that's here in chambers. Counsel Blackburn.
Well, thank you for that, uh, Mayor Given. However, I don't have anything at head all to report. I've been pretty much at home. Thanks.
Well, I'm glad you got to say it in the middle of the roundtable rather than towards the end. Thanks, Counsel Blackburn. Uh, Counselor Palat.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Given. Um, I, I guess, sticking on the theme of, of charities, I just want to remind everybody that the Cars for Christmas with Rotary is out. And uh, something I'm very excited about and I wish I could have my council colleagues through is this year's Dream Home, which our company was very proud to build. And I'm really proud of our team and the amazing job they did. But. Unfortunately, we're not allowed to do events at this point. So we're doing some small get-togethers, but hopefully in the near future, we'll be able to get through there and look at it. But having said that. I do want to remind people to support the Rotary with both of these Cars for Christmas and the Dream Home. Um, as we all know how much amazing things they do for our community. So uh, hopefully can people continue to support them and they can continue to support our community in turn.
Absolutely. Thanks, Counselor uh Plott. Counsel Friesen.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would like to give just a shout out to the Grand Prairie Regional Hospital Foundation. This was um, a, a tough. Year for the Festival of Trees in that in the middle of it. So they, you know, they had planned um, a, a great uh way of moving through and. Booking times online and all that sort of thing. And then in the, in the middle of it, uh, of course, our province um declared a state of emergency and uh. They had to shut down early. But I really want to commend them. Um, I was able to make it out there in my booked time. Prior to the um, closing down and it was no less the fantastic kickoff to the Christmas season that the Festival of Vol of Trees has always been. And uh, last I spoke with Dawn, the, the donations were down a little bit, but I was watching over the weekend, um, the, so you could. Uh, bid online for the items. And I was watching over the weekend and it was exciting to see that even though they were closed down live, people were still continuing to bid and bid up the prices on the trees and the. Uh, the trim and the gingerbread houses and all the wonderful things that are there. So thank you to Grand Prairie for stepping up as we always do. And uh, making this the best possible Festival of Trees for the foundation for sure. And uh, well done to, to the foundation. I had a wonderful time and uh. Was inspired to go home and um, see what I could make sparkle in my own home. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counsel Friesen. Yeah, just uh great to hear council members highlighting so many of the, the uh not-for-profits and charities that continue to work in our region. Uh, certainly they need support so they can continue to support the members of our region. I. Thank council members for shining a light on that because there are so many different great organizations that are continuing to work through all this, uh, so they can continue to serve and appreciate council supporting them. Um, I'll just highlight a couple of brief things. I attended a uh meeting with a Justice and Solicitor General as they start their development of envisioning a provincial, Alberta provincial police force. Um, so they committed to doing engagement through the course of the fall, uh, leading to uh. A requirement to submit to the legislature um, early in the new year. Uh, and this was the first of those sessions with more to come over the next little while. Uh, I, along with other members of council, uh participated in the Alquatera uh presentation of their draft business plan for the upcoming year. Um, and later that day, I participated in a municipal telephone town hall with the premier, Dr. Hinshaw, and uh our two local MLAs. Um, in their other portfolios, um, with respect to COVID nineteen update. Um, I also participated in an AUMA Municipal Governance Committee meeting on Friday the twentieth. Um, and I had the honor and, and pleasure of presenting to a, as a guest leader for a University of Alberta MBA Leadership Class. Um, this class typically travels to Grand Prairie, uh, they have for about four years in a row where they meet with uh local community leaders. Um, I have the, the pleasure of hosting them on the first night and, and having supper and chatting with them a little bit. And we did it virtual this year, but it was a real pleasure to be able to do that and continue to have that dialogue uh with, with those students and continue to help promote Grand Prairie and sort of get it on their radar. As they enter and start up their business careers. Um, I also had an AUMA board meeting on the twenty-sixth and an Alberta Police Advisory Board meeting on the twenty-seventh. And later on, on the twenty-seventh, I also attended uh the first half of a Northern Alberta Elected Leaders Meeting, uh, virtual of course. And then finally, on the twenty-ninth, yesterday, I was at Revolution Place to attend and help uh kickoff. Uh, some of the traditions of the Christmas season with the lighting of the Christmas tree um, through, for the city center Grand Prairie. I want to thank Wendy and the entire city center team for all they do to try to. Uh, support local business through this and keep up our community traditions. I want to thank the Revolution Place team for the work they do in organizing that event and adapting it to our new reality this year. Um, I understand that during the live feed hit a peak of about five hundred people in attendance, watching the live feed on, on Facebook Live. Uh, and many others uh watching over uh, you know, sort of, I guess, I'm not sure if you call it on a repeat on Facebook, but you know, that five hundred uh doesn't, uh, doesn't demonstrate all the people that did watch it. I would say that um. You know, it's interesting how we add these electronic things and we think, you know, they're sort of a, a halfway solution to what we used to have. And while that's very, very true because we can't get together. Um, I would uh make the observation that sometimes they help bring people closer together. Uh, my mom, who is not in the country right now. Uh, texted as we're leaving to say, hey, we, I saw you and the kids light up the Christmas tree. And it was something that I wasn't expecting. She wouldn't have been able to participate in um and enjoy. And so it's sort of a reminder that uh. Tech, we're, we're sort of seeing technology as this, this thing that we have to do because of the situation that we're in with uh COVID. Um, and we should remind ourselves that in certain ways, it is opening us up to be able to connect with people that we wouldn't be able to otherwise. And we should be thankful for that. Um, with that, I think that's all I have to report and we'll call our meeting adjourned.
Goodbye.